All right, it is 6:30, so I'm gonna call the study session of the City Council to order on, what is today? October 22nd, 2024. All right, we've got three items on our agenda tonight. We've got a joint meeting here with Planning Commission on Neighborhood Housing Opportunities, and we've also included with the future ULUC updates, and then American Rescue Plan Act Expenditure update. So I just wanna thank all of our Planning Commission for being in attendance here tonight. It's good to see everyone just get comfortable around this nice and small table here. If we could just have our guests in Planning Commission introduce themselves. I'm Mr. Craig Coronado, if you remember the Planning Commission for quite some time.
My name's Drew Goodman. I am in the whole City Council.
Sheri Yellman, I think I'm in my third term. First year, third term. Vice Chair.
Jason Reynolds, I'm in my third term on Planning Commission and serve as Chair.
Patrick Santana, first term.
Tim Neely, first term.
Dan Gulevich, first term.
Dan Hockelsberger, first term.
Well, with that, I'll just turn it over to staff, so we might have a discussion. I'll just ask everyone here, Planning and Council, to let's hold our questions through the presentation. We'll get to the presentation, and then we're gonna go back to the last five slides and go through that way, just to make it a little smoother there, as we go through the topics. Okay?
Mayor, I'll just start, I think most of the group knows, and I know my name's there. I'm Jim Buck, Neighborhood City Manager. Fostering an environment for more housing, more missing middle housing, more affordable housing has been one of the highest priorities for the City Council now for at least a couple of years. And I think this missing middle piece and more options along that housing spectrum is one of the key aspects of that vision and that plan. So that's what we're here for tonight. Staff's been working for almost a year now in earnest on this. You know, and I think, I'll just say, staff, we've done our best to synthesize the direction we've heard from the City Council, the info we've heard from the Planning Commission, info we've heard from the public through surveys and other forums, to bring you tonight what we think are some proposals that hopefully land somewhere in the middle of where Council and Planning Commission see this going. So really, we are here tonight to hear questions, and if possible, I know the mayor and I will do our best toward the end to facilitate, if there is some consensus on how we can move forward together. That's always our goal. We also wanna have real frank conversations. So with that, I'll turn it over to our senior planner, Zareen Tasneem, who can walk us through all of this good content.
Good evening, City Council and Planning Commission. Tonight we'll be talking about neighborhood housing opportunities, our missing middle ULUC code amendment. There are a number of papers that were handed out just now to ULAS handouts. These were requested by some members. These came about as some request from some City Council members and Planning Commission members that reached out to staff asking for some additional supplemental information in response to the packet that's gone out. We'll be sure that it's included as part of the finalized packet that is published for tonight. But just as an overview, there's some zoning maps in front of you. There's a feature, like, sorry, future land use and character map, it's Mount Paul, in front of you as well. We have a public comment period that's currently open, but, and we've included comments that we've received as of 5:00 PM tonight. It goes until Friday, but these are just the comments we have as of 5:00 PM. There is also a request for just sort of an acronym sheet to help people guide through some of the acronyms that are in the staff communication and in the presentation. So apologies for all the papers in front of you, but we are trying to accommodate requests.
Control, alt, delete.
I don't know if I have control of this laptop right now. Apologies, maybe allow the technical. There you go. I am, I'm drawing a little bit. So agenda for this evening, we'll establish a little bit of background on how we got to this particular meeting, go over the existing code regulations as they apply to the housing types that we'll be discussing, talk about the public outreach and research efforts. We've done the last couple of months related to this topic, and then really dive into some of the proposed code amendment changes we're proposing at this time. Talk about next steps in this process, and then end it with discussion questions, as Mayor was alluding to. So how did we get here today? The comprehensive plan, known as in Vision Littleton, set out a goal of housing diversity within it about five years ago at this point. We've done some of the previous code amendment work the past couple of years incrementally on this topic, always with the thought we'd touch upon at least accessory dwelling units as a larger item this year, and we've expanded upon that. During our January study session with City Council, we talked about our code amendment work plan, part of which was the neighborhood housing opportunities topic. We brought that particular topic back to City Council in June to talk about, you know, what's the parameters, what are our goals for that project, to establish a common understanding and to receive direction from Council to pursue this topic and to expand upon permissions in different zone districts. So for the purposes of this code amendment, we're really focusing in our neighborhood zone districts. That is our, really our residential zone districts within the city of Littleton, and that encompasses acreage residential, ACR, large lot residential, LLR, multifamily residential, MFR, medium lot residential, MLR, and small lot residential, SLR, zone districts under that broad topic. We are also primarily focusing on housing products that fall into that category between single-family detached house and multifamily dwelling. For the purposes of our zoning code, multifamily dwelling is defined as a product that has five or more units. So for the purposes of this code amendment, we had identified the housing types that fall within that missing middle category as accessory dwelling units, duplexes, three-to-four unit townhomes, multiplexes, and cottage core communities. So the next few slides will go over our existing code regulations as they apply to these housing types currently in our code. So ADUs are accessory dwelling units are currently classified as three categories within our zoning code, attached, contained, and detached. Attached is one that is attached to the house. Contained is an accessory dwelling unit that exists within the existing footprint of the house, so you could think of that as a basement unit. And a detached accessory dwelling unit is one that is completely detached from the primary dwelling unit. For the attached and contained accessory dwelling units, they're permitted in all the neighborhood zone districts. So again, those are our residential zone districts. Our quarter mixed-use zone districts, so that's our quarter mix, and neighborhood commercial zone districts that are primarily found along our major quarters of Broadway and Santa Fe, and then some of our downtown zone districts. The detached accessory dwelling units are permitted without any alley restrictions within our downtown zone districts and our quarter mixed-use zone districts. They're permitted with alley access restrictions in our small lot residential and medium lot residential zone districts. So the alley restriction, I know, has been a major point of contention in past discussions with this product. Duplexes are two separate dwelling units in one building structure. Currently, they're categorized as several different types within our zoning code in the land use matrix. They're permitted in the multifamily residential quarter mix in some downtown zone districts, and they're permitted as a conditional use in our small lot residential zone district above Kaylee Avenue. So a conditional use means that it needs approval of a conditional use permit that goes to public hearing in front of Planning Commission. A multiplex, as currently defined in our zoning code, allows up to four separate units within one building structure. They're meant to be designed to resemble a large, single-family house, and they're only permitted currently in our multifamily residential quarter mix and some downtown zone districts. A cottage core community is meant to be a cluster of homes around a central open space. They're permitted within the multifamily, medium lot residence, sorry, multifamily residential, medium lot residential, small lot residential, and quarter mix zone districts. But they're only permitted if they are adjoining or adjacent to a multifamily residential, neighborhood commercial, quarter mix, business center, or industrial park zone district, and the site must be between a half acre to three acres. Currently, the housing types that can be allowed for this type of mixture include single-family detached, duplex, and multiplexes. Okay, that was a lot. So we had a community survey that we had put out from August to September of this year. It was advertised across our city's social media, the Littleton Court online, in community spaces around town, in community newsletters, and shared out to other boards and commissions that are represented by the city. Staff also actually attended a meeting of the Next Gen Advisory Board to talk about this topic, to which Councilmember Rickard is the liaison. In total, we received 150 responses to this survey, and most of the survey respondents, about 65%, were supportive of the topic of housing diversity within the city. We included a question that was optional of providing people's address as part of the survey, and we mapped it, and as you can see on this map and better in your packets, of where does sort of like the supportive respondents line up to kind of where they're located in the city. And as you can see, they're really spread out. They're represented in the green in the map, really spread out all over the city. There isn't particularly one area of the city that we saw, at least of the people that provided addresses of concentration of that support. There was about 20, sorry, 15% that were a bit unclear where they landed in terms of supportiveness on the housing diversity. And some of those responses were just a little misunderstanding on the topic itself, or the responses leaned sort of on the side of they were supportive of ADUs and duplexes, but not necessarily supportive of products that were maybe of the three- or four-unit products. So we sort of categorized that as an unclear category. In your agenda packets, including all the pages, were the summary of the responses that were received, and particularly a response of all the open-ended questions. Really, a lot of good qualitative data there. A lot of stories that came out of there of people talking about they grew up in the city of Littleton, but now they can't afford to buy anything here, and they would love to live here. Or, you know, they are a lucky marine engineer, and they can't afford to purchase a house within the city of Littleton. So it really provides a story and background of some of these people that are responding and what they're really looking for. We also had a technical stakeholder group that we convened for a meeting in person in August. This included a representative from Planning Commission, architects that have worked on a missing middle-type product under the Unified Land Use Code within the city of Littleton, representative from Habitat for Humanity, representative from South Metro Housing Options, and really, those last two representatives were because of the need and awareness to keep affordability in mind when talking about this product. Overall, the stakeholder group was pretty supportive of increasing housing diversity within the city of Littleton and felt that the less regulations, the better. Particularly, from their point of view, particularly, you know, the consultant's purchase, the more regulations you add, the more consultant time is needed, which equals to more money, and that is offset to the end user, which means more, you know, the product ends up being more expensive once you add in all the factors. Some other research that we did was a GIS analysis of our existing lots within the city. We were particularly interested in looking at the average lot area and the lot width of our residential zone district lots. The average lot width, unfortunately, we're unsuccessful in calculating. That really needs manual calculation by our GIS staff that would take a long time to do for all the lots within the city. The average lot size, we were able to do, and why we were really looking for that is we are trying to approach it of the sense of, well, what is the typical or average lot existing look like within the city of Littleton? And how does that align with our existing development standards in the code? How is that lining up? And one of the takeaways we got is the minimum lot area for the acreage residential zone district was much higher in the code than kind of what exists. And one of the proposed changes, we'll talk about in a later slide, deals with kind of lowering that. We also looked at our survey of zoning codes of our surrounding municipalities and where they stand, and it's sort of a mixed bag there. Some are more permissive, some are more restrictive, some are currently working on their own current legislation. So it wasn't a conclusive answer in terms of are we more permissive or less permissive than some of the jurisdiction. We also, our public work staff did an infrastructure analysis of sewer system and traffic counts in response to the survey data, actually. One of the questions that we had was related to what is one of the challenges you predict related to this topic? And a lot of the survey responses were infrastructure and worries about that. So as part of your packet, there is a chart in there that talks about anticipated demand to our sewer system and traffic counts. One thing to note, it doesn't account for existing conditions, and the overall kind of takeaway that we were hoping that you got from the chart is that even if 1% of our, you know, residentially zone lots were converted to now build ADUs or duplexes or four-unit products, that would yield about 300-ish, 300-ish units. And, you know, with our current multifamily products, we might see that much units in one project and why we might have need for infrastructure improvements and traffic improvements on the streets. But with these smaller products, we are not really anticipating 300 units of these types to suddenly be built. At most, maybe we'll see a couple of dozen a year. So at the highest, let's assume, I don't know, 50 or so. If you divide that up, you're getting in about six years that 300 units or whatever else amount you're seeing for the percentage. And that's just 1% of the lots in the city. So we are not anticipating that much, you know, impact to the infrastructure system, but our public work staff has stated, as we go along, we will take, you know, account of existing plans and try to forecast for or try to accommodate any upgrades that would be needed. Okay, now getting into proposed. So back in our June study session with City Council, we had established and agreed upon several goals for this code amendment project. That includes clarifying the code regulations, incorporating requirements of the recently passed state AD legislation, accessory dwelling unit regulations, sorry, reducing existing code barriers, and then expanding upon these land use types as permitted in more zone districts in the city. So in terms of clarifying code regulations, we made some adjustments to the definitions of certain categories. So for duplexes, we got rid of the different use types that could qualify as a duplex and just consolidated into one duplex category. And that is defined as two units and one structure, period. We also, you know, altered the definition of a multiplex to now mean a three- or four-unit product in any configuration that doesn't meet the townhome definition. And it does not need to resemble a single-family home anymore. So it could have multiple doors on it, as long as there's one door facing the front. A townhome is specifically now a three-plus unit product, a single-family attached product with the front. It always had the front and back exposed. So the differentiation kind of here between the multiplex and the townhome is if you're thinking of maybe like a stacked triplex product, that falls now more into that multiplex definition because, you know, it doesn't have the front, back exposed. It's more of a stacked product, so that falls into that multiplex definition. The ADU categories have been supplied to just be attached or detached. So you either have a shared wall with the primary dwelling unit, or you don't have a shared wall with the primary dwelling unit. So just trying to simplify there. The height definition, we have aligned it with the building code definition, and that makes it easier for architects or other technical experts working with our regulation. And this is a direct effect of our technical stakeholder group that had this feedback for us. And then cottage core communities, we clarified the housing types to permit it to only just be single-family detached and duplexes. This kind of plays along to some of the permitted land use types later on. And then we also established maximum square foot limits on these housing types just to make sure they're more of that smaller product. So we did a couple of changes to meet the state ADU legislation that includes removing the alley access requirements for detached ADUs. I know, again, that's been a point of contention previously, so we're getting rid of that. We're allowing the detached ADU as permitted in all our residential zone districts or NV zone districts. We've increased the gross floor area allowed for detached ADUs to be 1,000 square feet. I will add, it reads as up to the gross floor area of the primary dwelling unit or 1,000 square feet, whichever is less. So we just wanna make sure that the accessory dwelling unit is still seen as accessory to the primary structure, so if you have a smaller primary structure, it doesn't exceed that. And then we've permitted it in areas that have single-family only plan development regulations. So if you notice on our zoning map, there's a lot of zone districts that you might see that has the slash PLO designation. That stands for Plan Development Overlay. That means there's a plan development that applies to it, which has specific regulations that apply to that area. And those regulations might include that you can only have single-family detached homes in that area. State requirements say that even in those areas, you must be, they must be permitted to build accessory dwelling units. We've also increased the height allowance for accessory dwelling units to match that of a single-family detached home in the same zone district. So that means in our neighborhood, most of our neighborhood zone district, you can now build a detached ADU accessory dwelling unit that can be up to 30 feet tall. We've also removed the minimum parking requirement for accessory dwelling units per the state AD legislation. Okay, in terms of reducing existing code barriers, a lot of this is related to duplexes. We've removed the conditional use permit requirement for duplexes, so no longer needing to go to Planning Commission for ultimate approval. We're also removing the site plan process requirement for duplexes. So as our current code reads, basically, anything that is not a single-family detached home has to go through a site planning process. So a site planning process is a land use application process that requires pre-application meeting, two neighborhood meetings, and then also administrative review that includes civil, you know, civil construction documents. It's a lengthy and intensive process. So that includes anything from duplexes beyond. We're removing the requirement for at least duplexes to go through that, and they can, with this proposed amendment, means that they can now just apply straight for building permits. So, you know, previously, you'd have to go through your site plan process, be approved, and then you can apply for building permits after that. This is also a direct feedback from our technical stakeholder group. Again, getting back to that. Again, getting back to that, removing regulations, so it lessens the cost burden on the end user. We are removing the footnote that permits duplexes only to be allowed south north of Cali. So now they could be allowed in SLR anywhere in the city. So speaking back to that JS analysis, we've changed the minimum lot area required for acreage residential lots to align with existing data. So in the code, existing a minimum lot area for ACR would be 2.75. We found that with our analysis, the average lot area for acreage residential lots was actually more 1.9. So once we saw that, we are proposing to lower that to 1.75 acres. And why we are doing that is, um, part of how we are establishing the lot and building standards for the duplexes and other types within the zone districts is that we ba- basically took the standards for what a single family residential home in that zone district was and pasted. So if you need, for example, a minimum of 10,000 square feet for a single family home in a certain residential zone district, in order to do a duplex in that zone district, you would now need at least 5,000 square feet for each unit. That's, that was sort of our attempt to build upon the work that was done to create the unified land use code and also try to, you know, play, understand that question of character, neighborhood character, and how can we kind of best align or have products that get to that neighborhood character? Again, our attempt to kind of get at that and we'll welcome discussion on that sort of, um, Jesus that we've made. And one of the feedback that we've gotten from constituents related to existing single family detached home in the multifamily residential zone district, and this is specifically ones that exist within more of the northeast corner of Littleton is, they have existing single family detached homes. That type of use is not permitted in the multifamily residential zone district currently. But they'd like to expand on their home and the code doesn't currently allow it. So we felt that's, that's still fit in within sort of the character of housing diversity. You know, you, we still want residents of Littleton to stay in their home, you know, expand upon it, live there longer. So we've established standards for just existing single family detached homes in the multifamily residential zone district. You still would not be able to build new, multi, uh, new single family homes in that district. We, as, also as part of feedback from our technical stakeholder group, we've increased the maximum parking allowed for the cottage court community types to be two spaces per unit. Again, feedback from technical stakeholder group in terms of, they were saying, you know, market conditions really for our area calls for something that allows for two units at least for, uh, for that product. We've also removed the adjacency requirements for the cottage court community. So it doesn't need to be next to certain zone districts anymore. And then we've also reduced the minimum side area required for cottage court community to be a quarter acre. Generally, our maximum densely allowed for cottage court communities is 16 dwelling units for, per acre. And a quarter acre is about four units. And we felt that, you know, that falls into that category that we're looking at of two to four units in this code amendment process. And then two bullet points on the slide, but it's probably going to be the most talked about during our discussion. So in terms of just permissiveness of the different housing types, we are, we are proposing to allow duplexes and cottage court communities in all the residential zone districts. We heard certain type of, again, that unease of the three to four unit product and also a little bit of protectiveness of, over the acreage residential in our large lot residential zone districts. So we are not proposing the three to four unit products in those zone districts. But, um, we are proposing that in our medium lot residential and small lot residential zone districts. So the medium lot residential and the small lot residential would now be allowed to have duplexes, cottage court communities, multiplexes, and the three to four unit townhome product. And just to highlight kind of like the impact that would have on the city of Littleton. One of the zoning maps that we have included really just sort of highlights what part of the city is currently zoned as MLR and SLR. And it, it also includes the ML, uh, medium law residential, small lot residential zone districts that have that plan development overlay designation. Again, they may only allow for single family residential in those areas. And at this time, we are not proposing to override that. But they also may not have that regulation in their plan developments, in which case they would be permitted to build that product. We also have within our zoning code regulation, a process for those single family detached houses that are in plan development overlay districts to get out of that plan development overlay regulation by going through a site planning process that ultimately goes through planning commission for approval. And planning commission actually recently heard such a case at a recent public hearing of a single family detached home that went through such a process. Oh, that was a lot. So next steps in this process, we are, as I mentioned before, we currently have the draft code amendment available for public review. It closes this Friday. As I mentioned before, I included a printout of all the comments that we've received so far, up until 5:00 PM today. We've received about 25 comments so far. And generally, they're supportive of the housing diversity topic. The general sentiment also was that we weren't going far enough in kind of our proposal and they're wanting to see even more looser regulations and really the allowance of these products across all residential zone districts. After this study session, we'll be meeting with planning commission at our, at their November 18th meeting for a public hearing on the code amendment ordinance. And then we'll be bringing that ordinance to city council for ultimate approval or denial or something. At our, at city council, at city council's January 7th meeting next year. With that, uh.
So if you can go back up five slides to slide 14, I just want to see. So this is kind of the dividing line between existing conditions and background and changes. Does anyone have any questions or comments on anything before this slide that was talking about existing conditions and how we got here? All right, don't see anyone. So then let's just.
I do have a comment.
Okay.
On ADUs, when we talked about ADUs before, we were stepping into it a little at a time. That's why the alley, you know, requirement. And it's, it comes across as previous councils or people that were looking were just like, they weren't very smart. It wa- it was a way to see how it worked. We didn't get a lot of permits. The state came in and kind of overruled that. So I don't know if everybody's just aware of that. And I just think it's important that people know what the rationale was for the alleyway requirement.
And we had always planned on coming back to see how that went, to have that discussion again with council.
So then, let's go through the goals, one, yeah, one at a time. Cause any, so the code regulation clarifications. Does anyone have any questions or concerns with this?
I, I don't have a concern. I just, can you give, provide a few more details on the height bullet and what those changes were?
Yeah, so our height definition in the zoning code now directly reflects the definition of height in the international building code and international residential code. Literally a copy and paste. And that's basically states that height is now defined as to the average of the roofs of a structure.
And it's 30 feet for most residential or?
We, yes, we did not propose changing the maximum height limit in any of the zone districts.
And I didn't know what it was, so I was part of my question.
Yeah, so for most of the residential zone districts, it is currently 30 feet. And we did not propose changing the maximum height on the residential zone districts. We are just proposing how height is defined and calculated.
Defined in different ways and relative to other buildings and things like that. So it would more just.
Great, thank you. I appreciate that.
Yeah, there was just the inconsistency between the building code definition and the zoning code definition. So that just made it for architects a little difficult for them to figure out, well, how are we calculating height? How are we now meeting your both codes to make sure everything is passed? Again, getting into more time required for consultants, which then adds more money on the end user. So we're just trying to simplify it to make it easier for folks.
As a consultant, it's okay to hire him eventually.
On cottage communities, earlier in the presentation, it talked about, and I guess this was, the standard was a half acre to three acre sites.
Yeah.
And now it's reduced to point two five.
Yes.
Quarter acre.
Yes.
Okay. Have you seen any examples of the quarter acre with community, cottage community? Just wondering, you know, that's.
We haven't because it wasn't allowed.
Definitely none within the city. So there may be some case studies outside the city. I don't know that we did quite that level of review. I think the analysis was more as Ms. Ryan indicated, scaling out what, what we feel could be the, the very minimum size to allow for those four units that would contemplate or complements the missing middle aspect of this code.
I just think about what would that look like and could, is that possible?
It'd definitely be snug, but no.
Yeah, given, you know, setbacks and requirements that we have.
And that just as a clarification, so a quarter of acre equals 10,890 square feet. So that's almost equivalent to some of our medium lot residential lots.
And was the, the rationale because we haven't seen any cottage court come in or that worked with what they had and to be a little more permissive and to give them more options to be able to say, hey, you can put, it won't be as impactful if you have four, four units on a quarter acre. Has the same impact as 16 on a full acre. It's just more options.
Hundred percent, definitely more parcels that it would, that would be the potential for cottage court.
And that's also why we clarified the definition to only be single family detached and duplexes again, because we were seeing some survey data of people being a little more hesitant on more than a duplex product. So scaling back the type of housing product for me.
Before it allowed single family duplexes and multiplex, where?
Which are attached, but this would also allow, you could do three smaller houses then.
Yes.
But they could be completely detached.
Yes.
So if it allows a lot more.
Yeah.
This is, this is kind of a technical point. This is regards to the table, 10 dash four dash 2.2. The cottage courts are allowed to cover the maximum building lot coverage is point six, which is 60% of the lot could be covered with buildings. I just noticed on that table, I, I think overall you've done a good job simplifying it and clarifying the table. But I wondered if we shouldn't also match the multiplex. If we're going to have cottage courts cover 60% of the land and those are small buildings, why not have multiplex in those same districts conforming to same point six? Point four five. Right now we have multiplexes, which is a multi, a single multi-unit building has to, cannot cover as much acreage or much of the lot as cottage court buildings.
So that is a point of discussion amongst you all. Mostly what staff did for multiplexes in cottage court was just take whatever existing regulations for that product is and then just apply it to each zone district. So we didn't change the coverage or the density, so the maximum units per acre allowed. We sort of took what was existing in the multifamily residential for that product and then just applied it to each of the zone districts. However, that could be a point of discussion among city council and planning commission if you did want to discuss changing that lot coverage and density for each zone district specifically and give staff direction on what that number would be.
The reason I think that they should be in conformance, that coverage of the lot should be the same for multiplexes, cottage courses. They're the same basic type of building, multiple homes for smaller home sizes, for individual families or individuals to buy or rent. And that's the same basic concept. A cottage court is separating them into cottages. A multiplex would have them look like a single home within the envelope of our home design standards.
Which table were you?
10, 4, it's in the language, 10, 4 dash 2.2.
Point two.
The challenge for getting sort of multiplex buildings on small lot residential, which we do allow in this, point four five, 45% of a small lot is a very tiny amount of land for a four unit, a three to four unit building. So I just think that if we're having cottage courts take up 60%, that we should extend the same sort of calculation.
Patrick, are you saying they should be the same across all?
Well, it is, this table has been simplified to use it across all of the things. So, so a cottage court could be 60% of a small lot, 60% of a medium lot. It could cover 60% of a large lot, but. And I'm saying with a multiplex, similar thing, it's a multi-family building. It should be allowed the same lot coverage. Just because if we want to see this form of home built, or homes built, on some of the smaller lots, 45% of a 2,800 square foot lot is like 1,200 feet. You really, that's, it doesn't, it's not almost gonna be, it won't be possible. And I think a lot of what, what I think is goal here is to make possibilities happen. We don't know who's going to build these or whether banks will finance them yet. But if they're not possible in the way that goes on the tables and the codes, they'll never. And so, you know, I'm just looking for a way to kind of make it as widely possible. And that's kind of what I heard in a lot of the comments was let's get out of the, oh, the too tighter regulations. And this was, this struck me as one area where we might have put something in the table that almost writes it out of existence on some of the smaller lots. But it's a technical point. I just wanted to, that's something staff could look at and talk about. I just thought I'd mention it because they are similar kind of products. And, and the goal of both is to get smaller homes for multiple families or individuals. That's the table. There must be a lot.
Anybody have any thoughts on that while we're talking about it?
Yeah, I'd take kind of a devil's advocate role to that. Within a, a, a single zone district, say SLR in this case, you have cottage courts at 60% lot coverage and you have single family residences at 33% maximum. And that, I think that lot coverage is a primary driver of neighborhood character. And so I'd be concerned about the differential there. And perhaps that much lot coverage might change the character of some of our neighborhoods that already have the character.
I agree with Craig.
Understand the need for affordability and the flexibility to actually implement some of these new types of housing in cottage court communities. But maybe it, maybe the driver is going back to the larger minimum lot size. Instead of going to a quarter acre, maybe that's what's driving that higher lot coverage. Maybe stick with a half acre. So I think that's what it was before. Just a thought.
I agree with Patrick. There's no point in changing it if we're not going to make it possible for people to build it. If it doesn't pencil on paper, then no one's even going to look at doing it. So I don't think it's going to mean more people are going to start doing it actually. But I think it's our job here to talk about opening things up. So it's.
You bring up a good point, but I think we need to match the character of the community. And so maybe on that lot, there will only be two cottage homes instead of one or five or whatever it is. I mean, I think a lot of these changes seem to ignore the comp plan and the character. We're trying to keep some character in our community. And, and I've heard people say, well, what I think of character? Character is defined by the comp plan. It's density, layout of the residential development. And then there's scale and form of non-residential development. And it's how much open space and natural vegetation and to the building. And I think we have to keep that in mind. And I think we have to keep that in mind in all these changes. And when we loosen up codes changes, some of it makes sense, like the permitting process or something. But some of it needs to make sure we're retaining the character of our community. That's what makes Littleton great. I know we have a housing shortage. I know we need more housing, but we need to do this carefully and not just open it up to any kind of building in any neighborhood. I mean, if we have duplexes that look like single family, that makes sense. To put multiplexes in single family neighborhood, that changes things a lot, a real lot. And I don't know, how affordable are these multiplexes going to be? I mean, how, you tell me, is that gonna be a three hundred thousand dollar buy? Maybe? Is that more affordable? But I just think all these changes and I, okay, I'm gonna go in my soapbox here.
Well, I was gonna say, let's just stick to the topic at hand and we can get back to the other topics. I'm sure they'll come up so we don't get sidetracked here.
I think a third of them will have to be affordable for our our housing ordinance, our inclusive housing.
That's a technical question, I don't know the answer to.
Five.
How many units do you have to be building before the five?
Five.
Okay.
Or.
Oh, I I just didn't know, sorry. I don't have a comment on this.
Can I ask a question and maybe we'll get to this about cottage court adjacency?
We'll get to that next.
Um, on that table as well, on the multiplex, it has point four, and it has like, that's the units per acre is twenty two. The new revision is supposed to take it down to like a maximum of four for a multiplex. Is that correct? Four units as a multiplex?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, so that is that going to change this table somehow as well?
The maximum, you mean the minimum?
The the maximum was was, I think in in further on is gonna be four. Just since we had the table up, I figured I would ask the question because it's, it would be four, four units would be the maximum in a multiplex definition.
Yeah, and that that hasn't changed. It's always been you can have up to four units in a product.
Okay.
We just changed, it used to be like a really like up to a four unit product. Now we're define, clarifying it into three or four unit product. Because now, you know, the two unit product is just falling into that duplex category and that could be any type of configuration.
Okay, so it's always gonna be a three or four unit. So that number kind of is, kind of doesn't matter.
Yeah, yeah.
You could have multiple multiplexes on a parcel. I think that's where the density gets to. If you had four, four unit multiplexes on a parcel, that would be.
Correct.
Yes, and then just a reminder that we're, as of currently, we're only proposing like the multiplex and the three to four unit townhome product in the MLR, medium lot residential, small lot residential zone districts. They are are permitted in the multifamily residential. But we are not currently proposing that they are permitted in the acreage residential and large lot residential zone districts. But if you choose to allow them there.
I I can't see it. So you are changing it to, what's the original and what's the change? I just can't see it.
Yeah, the original is anything in black. The proposed changes is anything that's red or crossed out.
I get that. So multiplex is currently allowed in MLR and SLR?
We are proposing for them to be permitted in medium lot residential and small lot residential.
They're currently allowed in multifamily.
Yes, they're currently only allowed in multifamily residential.
That's why they're added to those two. They're there with red.
I'm, I'm gonna be the probably the lone wolf here, but I do not agree with that because it changes the character too much.
That's on a different slide. Let's get to that slide later. Let's go back to Patrick's point with the the building coverage of those. And were you looking at in specifically in any of the, in SLR or in any of the zones?
They use the same percentage in all the five districts. So I was, whatever that number is, it's gonna be the same in all the districts. So cottage courts have sixty percent lot coverage in every one of the districts. And I was just saying that we should, we could use the same point six for all five of the districts. And it's most important in the smaller lot sizes because you have less room to get your buildings in.
So that.
Because this point four five.
Six ratio in all five zones, right? That's, you weren't saying that to change that because they are the same in every single.
They are the same, right. I was just saying change it from point four five to point six so that multiplex, three to four unit matches the same as cottage court.
Correct. And what is, and so while the same, what is the duplex is point four five, is that what? Multiplex is also point four five in every single unit there.
That's correct. Duplex is point four. In LLR it's point three three.
So is there?
Oh, yes, okay.
And MFR is point three.
I was looking down at the SLR is point four five.
It's the, it's, this is in the revised code. Do you want me to review that to you?
Yeah, it's in the.
I don't know, I can't get it network easily.
Yeah, if you guys need help navigating it, you can go to the city code and then under code changes, you all you see pending text will bring you to the proposed changes. There's also a direct link to the site in your staff communication or in the staff communication as part of this item in the references section.
Do you not get bogged down in the details?
Yeah, I don't need to get bogged down. I would say, you know, I think having consistency across the zones for the product type is important. If you go, I mean, you could take, Patrick, you could say, well, each zone should have the same, it should be point six in, you know, a small lot or point three three. And that's kind of what it is. I think, if anything, I think having the same product type would be more important. So, you know, I wouldn't not support that, but I'm not gonna necessarily push too hard, I think.
I thought I'd raise it, which seems like on SLR it's gonna be really.
Well, in SLR, it is point six though, right, or?
No, it's point four five.
Okay, sorry, yes, I bet, that's what I'm saying. To have it point six across all the zones, yes, I would support that. I was saying, you were saying move multiplex up to point six. You were saying both?
That multiplex and cottage court would have point six across all the zones, yeah. Because we have multi, we have cottage court is point six across all the zones now. And cottage courts.
Correct.
Have actually, you know, a lot of driveway and they're gonna have more open space really than. If if you can get the buildings to sixty percent and still have a lot of open space in a cottage court, it seems like it's just, it's just a reconfiguration of the same open space to allow multiplex buildings, a three and four unit product to have the same site impact, you know?
So, yeah, I would say have it point six in the for cottage court.
Yeah. Just seems like that'll make it.
Yeah, I was gonna be at point six for multiplex and point six for townhomes. I mean, is that what we're saying too? So that like you don't have, I mean, you wouldn't have some houses, like tiny houses on giant lots. You have, like, everybody would be proportional to their lot. Is that what you mean or am I?
He had two, I think he had two different ones there.
Okay, I get it.
Yeah.
But it shouldn't be proportional to the lot size for that area.
Right, and it is. These these point sixes, these percents relate to the lot size. So a small lot, it'll be sixty percent of a small lot, sixty percent of a larger lot, just like a cottage court works.
The buildings in that neighborhood might be thirty three percent of a lot. And why would we change it? I mean, maybe we should because it's not possible, but shouldn't it be compatible with the neighborhood?
Well, I think my experience is there are a lot of very large houses on some of the SLR and MLR spots that take up. I mean, if you go to like, I have photos of them if you wanna look at them, but I brought the URLs. But there are, there are very big houses on small lots in the city. Some of them built as recently as two thousand and three. It's not, there is no single style or particular proportion of house to lot. We have a really wide range. Some of them have a sixty foot setback in Old Littleton. Others are up at the front of the street. We have fifteen foot setbacks and five foot yards. We have some very large fours, almost four story buildings and and on very smallish lots. It's not, it's, there is no one descriptor for character or the style of the neighborhood here. But what I think the goal here is to is to find ways to get more opportunities for people to build housing for different kinds of homes on these lots. And I'm just looking for something consistent that also seems to be more expansive in terms of what it offers someone to build a house or a multi-unit building on these lots. It just seemed to me that cottage courts and multiplexes are similar conceptually. And so that the space they're allowed to occupy on a parcel, the same concept that covers the space of a lot for for a cottage court would match what we do with multiplex. I do hate the word multiplex, by the way. It's housing for robots. I really think they should be one home, two home, multi homes. I was at the city council and I was like, we should put the word home after each of these and stop saying plex. But that's.
So rather than dwelling on this minutia here, I think there's some support to at least move it, have this discussion moving forward when it goes through planning to change that. So I think several council members expressed that. Any other on the code clear, code clarification? And?
Yeah, the, as duplexes are gonna be allowed across the city under this, what's the difference between a deep, an attached ADU and a duplex? Is it just merely a size, a square footage thing that could possibly happen? Is that what it is?
Uh, functionally, it's more of the same. It's two units permitted on one lot. The difference is our code requires accessory dwelling, it needs to be deed restricted, that you cannot sell them off as separate products. Whereas a duplex, you are able to subdivide that and sell it off as a separate lot or a separate unit.
Okay, I suppose that's an option someone may want, I I guess.
Yeah, and there's also no gross layer area restriction.
Yeah, yeah, you see, you aren't running into the, if it's five thousand square feet or whatever, I have to divide it twenty five, twenty five. You can divide it how you want on an ADU, right? Okay.
Yeah, functionally, there's not much difference legally, just with the division of the property. That's pretty much the only difference. Anything else on this slide? All right, next one. So the ADUs, any question, comments on the ADU changes?
My assumption is that all these are what are required by state law and that this is not any more expansive than what we're required to do. Is that assumption correct?
Mostly the state law basically requires anything, regulation that applies to a single family house should be permitted for accessory dwelling unit. You know, any, you shouldn't have regulations that are stricter for accessory dwelling unit. That's a stricter regulation than it is.
So.
A lot of percent.
Yeah, but but I think, I guess my, my assumption is unless we wanna pay Reed to fight the state, we don't, this isn't really anything to talk about.
I don't think we'll have to pay Reed. I think you're gonna see plenty of pushing back on these regulations through throughout this.
I like Robert's idea.
What's that?
You already paid Reed. He's gonna get paid the same if he fights it or not, so.
Pay, pay consultants helping Reed. But I guess I just, I don't think we need to spend a lot of time on this one, unless we wanna push back on the state. And that's not a part of my agenda. A lot of other people do that.
The last two bullets included in the state legislation, I thought the maximum, maximum height addressed in the state legislation.
Um, we aligned it just to be as primitive for a single family detached. Off the top of my head, I'm not sure if it's explicitly stated there. That's something we can look into. Um, in terms of just the height question as applies to just the other products, we do have in our code regulation, um, contextual development standards for today. If a single family house wanted to do basically a second floor addition, we would require them to supply a analysis of the lot, two adjacent lots next to it, what are their heights? And if the proposed height of that addition exceeds the, this is getting really complex, but the average height of those neighboring lots by a hundred and fifteen percent, then we require that lot to provide buffer yard, a landscape buffer yard that would include trees and shrubs and things of that nature. So that would apply to all these products in terms of duplexes, triplexes, that would still apply. It's not quite applied to the accessory dwelling unit product and that might be a point of discussion here. The buffer yard requirements really require like a ten foot perimeter. And if we're staff's thought on this is if it's an existing, let's say detached garage, that might be accessory structures are allowed to be built up to five feet from a property line. So if someone is trying to convert that structure, they might not quite meet that buffer yard requirement. So we didn't reference that contextual development standard. However, that might be a point of discussion here amongst city council and planning commission. And staff can double check if if you did decide to build that route of requiring that if that does, if that does not violate the state legislation.
I guess my point in asking that question is to Robert's point. We can't really argue with the state legislation, but there are a couple bullets here, I think, that go a little bit beyond that tailoring our code to maybe correct some deficiencies in the power code that didn't allow ADUs to be built or be practical in certain situations where the height allowance wasn't enough.
I think that's what this does. It says if you can build a two story building in that zone, you can build a two story ADU. Because before it was more restricted. It had to be, you couldn't go above the height of your neighbors and stuff like that. I have no issue with anything on this slide.
I don't either, although it may be worth saying, I wouldn't expect someone to move their garage five feet if they wanted to convert that to an ADU.
Right, so for that, you know, they're not, if they're converting, if staff didn't feel they would be able to really quite meet the buffer yard requirement, so we decided to leave that out. But again, we can look into their research, but not quite sure if it would meet the state legislation requirements.
Okay, I think we can move on to the next one. That is.
I just have it in this mode so we can quickly reference the code ordinance if needed.
So I think we're starting to get into a little more discussion here with some of the barriers here with duplex, you know, start with duplexes here. Any questions on issues with duplexes?
I have a question to clarify. I think that the duplexes have to match the kind of neighborhood characters, is that correct? So they have to look like a single family dwelling if they're in a residential area?
They don't necess, do you mean like?
There was talk of the requirement that it looked like a single, that the duplex would look like a single family house and that would match that neighborhood. Is that gone?
What does a single family house look like?
It doesn't, um, it looks, it it, you can't tell the difference.
We don't, we don't have any character requirements at this point for different places.
So it can look like anything? It could be any height or any requirement?
Well, the contextual development standard related to height would apply.
Yeah.
And then they would have to provide that buffer yard if they're exceeding the heights.
But not materials or style or.
We we do have a few design items currently in the code. So there's a couple that discuss front door and entry locations, front and side porches. So there, we do have a few. There, there's not a whole lot, but there are a few in there.
Oh, we're, I think we're proposing to eliminate those to make it easier for people to build.
Yep.
But we are still requiring at least one door needs to face the right away to, I think, get to some of that character. So it doesn't have like, you know, the primary entrances are, let's say, on the side of the buildings. At least one door needs to face the right away or the public street. And that's for any of these products to sort for, staff was trying to capture some of that character requirement.
Which is a unique requirement in and of itself because so many people just go into their garage and don't use their front door for anything. So it's kind of a meaningless requirement.
When out there campaigning, you see the pile of campaign literature on people's.
I don't know what you're talking about.
Yeah, just wanted to make sure that we drew that distinction.
Yeah, no, I I guess.
There are a couple items.
So, so, so I'm really excited about the added standards for existed single family house because I think that's really my district where you have that problem. And there's some really nice houses that I feel like people wanna make nicer, so I'm excited about that. But that was, that's my bread, but I'm very, very uncomfortable with the, which is really the next slide, duplexes on all of the different kind of residential lots. So I'm, I'm not comfortable with that at all. And I'm hoping for some sort of middle ground because at this point I am not comfortable with duplexes on the, on the, you know, by right, on the, on the medium or the large lots.
Why?
I think what you said, this, I mean, our, our job, I agree with Patrick, is to give more housing options. But our other job is to preserve the character of the city and prepare for the change. You know, so it's balancing change and character. And I, this ultimately is a suburban city full of, you know, single family houses on, on, on you know, small, medium and large lots. And I, I think that is our character and for a large part of our city. And so I'm happy to, I understand the need for more options, but the current kind of blanket. And so, uh, I'm happy to, I understand the need for more options, but the current kind of blanket, um, duplexes is, I'm not comfortable with that at all. So I'm very comfortable with the technical changes. I'm very comfortable with a lot of these changes, but the duplex, in particular in the multiplex too, I, I want. But the duplex is for sure, I want more, I want a better option than all or nothing.
That's the next one, right?
Before we get to that slide, anything on this slide here?
Well, cause it's because the first two bullets, I feel like the first two bullets overlap, and that's why I felt somewhat comfortable jumping ahead.
Well, I think with this specifically is, it's, you know, reducing some of the regulation for duplexes to say, hey, if you're gonna, you know, why don't you have to have a site plan to do a single family home? A duplex isn't that much different than a, a single family home.
Yeah.
I think a site plan is hugely important, especially for the neighbors. I mean, we're talking about all these changes, but, you know, I haven't heard much about how we have neighborhood engagement. And, you know, whether they're gonna throw a fit on the, you know, it's always not in my backyard. You know, right now, everybody's thinking, oh yeah, this is great, 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 but as soon as it happens, it, it, next to them, they're like, nope, not, not next to me. Um, so site plan, I, I would not want to get rid of a site plan. I think that's too important.
I'm in favor of all these changes.
I'm also in favor of all these changes. I think philosophically, I disagree with the three of you. I don't think our community character is single family homes. I think there's, the diversity is what we're going for with our character in our community. I don't really think, I think it's more people than structure. So I don't have a problem with these changes, cause I think it supports trying to get more, uh, diversity, and that's what I wanna see. I don't want us to be preserved in nineteen fifties. I don't think that's, um, truly what our community is.
Well, I think it's worth noting too, there are lots of areas in the downtown, you know, historic downtown area that are, you know, that were originally built as three, you know, three to four unit houses, basically, and that is this, this historic character, because that was how people built, because that made it a- affordable, and there's lots of duplexes, you know, in this, you know, in these, in these areas. You know, I know some of these ones around, you know, where I've ridden my bike around the neighborhood, and I've seen a lot of like kinda ranchers that are, that are duplexes. And there's nothing that's like, I, I mean, I'm not gonna lie to you guys, I've seen some really ugly single family homes. And there's nothing that stops people from building something that looks like a, a, an eighteenth century fort as a single family home that totally doesn't line.
Speaking of specific house somewhere.
That totally does not align with neighborhood character, but nothing stops them from building those. And if you look at what they've got on slide eight, I just wanna think, like, you've got great examples of multifamily homes here, right? And, and can you zoom in on that picture? Can you make that picture just bigger? Absolutely none of those is gonna wreck Littleton neighborhood character. In fact, I think that some of those would actually be better suited for the large lot residential, because they look like houses that are already on these large lot residential spots.
It's more than just the home. It's the parking, it's the added, you know, just the added volume to, to, to the streets and to the schools and to everything. It's, it's more than just the, the, the look of the.
I mean, it's an added tax base too. We've talked about what the, the biggest tax revenue in Littleton is Amazon sales tax. Is that right?
It's, we don't, we don't make any tax. No.
Was that you?
Yeah, no, our biggest, our biggest source of sales tax is purchases.
Sales tax.
Is, well, sales tax is our big source of revenue, and, and our biggest, the way the chief financial officer currently breaks it up is our, our
Yeah.
mail order tax is our biggest category. So, but.
So literally more people ordering online, getting deliveries. I mean, that's, that's a bigger tax for you too, for Littleton.
Yeah, it, it, that's changed, it's, it's changed the economics. I just.
So let's, so I think we're getting into the next slide here a little bit, so, um, we could, we could have that discussion, uh, in a second.
Yeah.
I have a question about the adjacent, uh, remove adjacency requirements for cottage.
Cottage court.
Can you explain what it is now and what it would mean if we, when we would move it?
Yeah, so currently.
I know it has to be on the edge or something, doesn't it?
It has to be next to MFR or.
Correct, so it's only permitted, well, only permitted in these zone districts. But on top of that, that zo- if it's in that zone district, it has to be also adjacent, like, share of lot line or pretty close to it, to these other zone districts. So really, it's kind of getting closer to more of our corridor area.
So, so basically, if it's in medium lot or single lot residential, it has to be adjacent to multifamily or corridor use currently. This is to say, we could put, it's, it's a residential use, let's put it in residential zones.
I am not an advocate. I am against changing the adjacency requirements, because it could pop up right in the middle of a neighborhood. And that, to me, does not, um.
Quite a bonnet.
Keep the character of the community. Is it all of a sudden you have a cottage court in the middle that to keep it on, you know, more of the corridor type set? So I'm against that one. Um, and also, the site plan, Patrick, Patrick brings up, um, a good point, so. I'm for maintaining the char- I'm not against housing diversity. I'm not against, um, duplexes and multiplexes. It's just in the right area, in the right place, that corresponds to the character of that community. That's why people live here and wanna be here. They don't wanna this hodgepodge of things, and I think we're moving in that direction.
Well, I mean, and Patrick is right.
Hey, Robert, can Jason head his hand up here?
Well, sorry. Yeah, my mistake.
Thank you. Yeah, really appreciate this discussion about character. One thing I'd like to talk about is my street. My street, the fifty-three hundred block of South Lausen, one block west of Mindemir. When I moved there in two thousand and four, the character of that street was single family starter homes and duplexes. Five of the nineteen houses on my street were duplexes when I moved in. And thanks to the legacy zone district from the nineteen seventies that restricted my neighborhood to single family detached only, we lost four of those five duplexes. I'd love to have those back. I'd love to have people be able to walk to the light rail station from my block. And when we're talking about character, one of the ways you can address that is not through a complicated process requiring a public hearing, but rather through design requirements. And I think there's a great example of how that works, just a few blocks from here. Uh, fifty-six oh three versus fifty-six one three, South Detoura Street. That's the southwest corner of Powers and Detoura. There's two houses next to each other. Fifty-six oh three was built before we adopted the ULUC with its attendant requirements, that if you're alley loaded, you've gotta use the alley. Fifty-six oh three looks like it belongs in Highlands Ranch with a really wide driveway. It disrupts the pedestrian character of that neighborhood. Fifty-six one three, the northern house, is alley loaded and more respectful of the character of that neighborhood. So I would encourage staff to carefully look at sort of the design standards that are associated with these types of units. And look at ways to mitigate the impact that does not require a public hearing. As for cottage court communities, I did a quick query in the GIS, and I literally live next door to a potential cottage court community. It's a lot that's about eleven thousand square feet. I am one hundred percent okay with that.
I would piggyback on what Jason said. I think part of the point of this whole conversation is to open it up so people can build something more interesting and more quality. I think our job as council is to be responsive to citizens and to bring voice to their concerns. And if we look at this housing survey, people are okay with it. So I don't, I don't know if it matters what any of us individually think. It seems to me like from the, haven't been a ton of people respond, but from those who have, they're okay with it. And I also think that what we get the most pushback on is when it's gonna be ten thousand more people on the corner, and that's a lot of traffic, and that's a lot of infrastructure. This is very gentle. And if we open it up, we can have smaller builders do more interesting things. We've talked about a design book, which is not in this presentation today, but I would prefer to talk more about quality design and open it up. I would be up for opening all of this. Take away the adjacent requirements, I would say it makes the most sense on the acreage lots, so I would open it all up.
I agree with Andrea and also about the, I'm open to having more specifics around design, to getting to meeting what you were really doing. Like, there is something, and what you were saying, Jason, too, like, it is off, and it, and it, you're right, it doesn't match, and it just is, looks odd. Um, and so I think having a design book could be helpful and would alleviate maybe some of your uncomfortableness, Robert. Well, cause then you would, you would know what, what, what could be built there and it would be so weird.
I appreciate, I mean, I, I just, you know, I'm looking for some middle ground. I'm not comfortable where we're at. And, you know, there are definitely neighborhoods that are, that are, uh, improved by the density. And I think our downtown has been improved by the density that is there, and I think it makes our, you know, our arts and entertainment district a nicer place to go to, cause more people live down there. And so I, I, there are, there's a time and place for, I feel comfortable with some.
But not your backyard?
Huh? That's right. Yeah, yeah, no, absolutely, absolutely. There are, I, I.
Just. Sorry, sorry.
No, it's, it's okay. I'm, I gotta, I'll own my, um, you know, my, my, my position, which is, is a little bit of a not in my backyard. I live in a large, um, lot residential, and my lot's big enough for four cottage courthouses in, in this, and I think that's, I, I own that. And I'm, I'm not comfortable with it, and, and I'll, I'll own that. Um, and you can tease me about it all you want. So I think there, but there are middle grounds. But my worry about your point, Gretchen, is that we're also trying to increase affordability. And what I heard last time we had this conversation was design, you know, design pushes in the opposite direction. Uh, design requirements push in the opposite direction of affordability. And so I'm, you know, I, I don't wanna, I, I, you know, I feel like Andrea made a point where we don't wanna, uh, make it like we're halfway creating options, but we don't actually make it easier and cheaper for people to build where we want them to build. And so I just, I do want some design, but I don't wanna make things more expensive too. You know what I'm saying?
I don't actually think this is gonna open the floodgates for anything. I don't think we're gonna start seeing a hundred requests on this.
No. No, but it, but I think the issue is, is that we're making decisions that are gonna last forty or fifty years, and.
And it's gonna make it slow and hopefully quality. So I think I actually want the same thing as the three of you, but I'm taking a completely different approach.
I'm, I'm.
We thought that when we went through it in the beginning. Now, all of a sudden, polls comes out with a statewide mandate, and now we're changing stuff immediately, so. This idea of things changing, you know, next council looks at it and looks at it a little differently and, and gives a little bit more, and then a little bit more.
Well, let's get ahead of it.
And next thing you know, you know, we're, we're no longer voting.
I'm saying go the whole opposite way. Like, let's get ahead of anything that anyone's gonna tell us to do, and so that we have in place the design book. Otherwise, we're gonna talk about the design book for ten years, never have that, and we're not gonna make any progress on this until someone makes us do it, and then we get a bunch of crap building. I have a neighbor who's building a third garage, and he has a huge shop in the back. His lot is probably seventy-five percent of his. Nobody cares, cause he has a nice big house, but it's not, it's just not equitable. It doesn't meet our need as a city. I don't think it actually meets what citizens are saying they want, so.
I, I think Gretchen may be onto something in terms of design book maybe being a middle ground, because that's our concern.
And there's some affordability there. There are some communities that have used design books to allow expedited processing for affordable bills. And there are groups like comparable to Habitat who are doing those kind of projects. And if they have a community that already has pre-approved plans, that saves them hundreds of thousands of dollars, and so it makes it more easy for them to wanna come and build. And I would like to attract those builders to Littleton.
And, and don't they have that for ADUs too? I mean, could you pick?
Yeah, there's communities that do.
They do, those do exist. It's not in, it's.
Not here.
Contemplated with this, this is just a code amendment. Once we have standards in place, typically you would need the standards in place for then maybe a consultant or architect to come in, use those standards to then create that design pattern work. So that's maybe more of like a phase two of this project or something to talk about in the future, cause that also requires funding to for the city to hire a consultant and maybe put something like that together. So not something contemplated as part of this code amendment could, but it could be a future byproduct or something that comes out of this.
Only issue I have on this slide, um, is the acreage lot. I know we talked about this on Friday. And so what you say, the, of the, right now, the minimum is two point seven acres roughly.
Two point seven five, yeah.
Two point seven five. The average is one point nine, so you're suggesting to go down to one point seven five for that. That means to me that there's lots that are less than one point seven five, so why would we make the minimum lot size for a zone greater than what the minimum lot size is in the zone?
You're suggesting it go lower?
Yeah, you said, I mean, what is, you said the smallest one was one acre or point nine?
Uh, the smallest is point nine.
How does it even be an acre if it's point nine? It's like, hasn't even been the literal definition.
And, I mean, if you, if you really dig into that, it's interesting, because the acreage and large lot, they're kind of, it's like a checkerboard places.
Yes, there's a certain arbitrariness of math and the terms.
It's kind of a, yeah.
So, uh, to that point again, and also to council member Groves' friend, we try to think about character in some type of research data way. And we thought about like, well, if you think of the certain lot type, what is the average? Cause then that establishes like what is like a general character for that lot. And that's why we use the average lot area. However, that is a point of discussion amongst council and planning commission, if we should actually relook at the data and instead look at what is the minimum existing lot area for each, uh, of the zone districts based on our data. Because again, we base our other standards, uh, off of that minimum lot area for a single family. Um, as a reminder, the duplex is just a half of the single family standard. So yes, there are, there could be lots that exist today that wouldn't be able to build a duplex, because they are not meeting the minimum lot area requirements as supposed.
And I think having a few non-conforming parcels is just gonna happen, but having fifty percent of them, if you're saying the average, fifty percent of them are literally non-conforming, why is it that you're not conforming on site? So I would suggest we try to make it lower on that.
And that's a point of discussion, books, you have.
You wanna, instead of putting it the, you mean to flip, you should, we, we could flip the conversation from average to, to, uh, to the fiftieth percentile, and you would wanna put it down to the twenty-fifth percentile.
I mean, twenty, I would say even lower. I mean, to say the minimum lot for this zone is what it is, why do we have lots in that zone that aren't at that minimum then?
Well, you just said, there's gonna be some that are non-conforming, and so what percentage do, what percentage do we want?
What percentage would be?
And, and I'm saying twenty-five, but if you, if you put it down to, then wouldn't we also be allowing all the, kind of the larger lots to get split? Would that be the outcome of that change?
That could potentially then be the outcome of, if you currently have like a five acre lot.
There would be that potential.
Which I do not, just to be clear.
But example sake, if you, let's say, have currently a five acre lot that is acreage residential, because our minimum lot area is currently two point seven five, you would not be able to subdivide that into two single family lots, because it's not meeting that minimum lot area requirement. But by lowering it to one point seven five, you would then be able to subdivide it.
And the fact that there's, what, thirty parcels in that acreage area? I don't see a whole lot of movement there. I'm, this is not about actually changing anything there. It's just about logic of what, the definition of what the lot is. I mean, we could say a minimum lot is five acres, and then it's, it doesn't even, nothing meets the requirement, so.
Yeah, it's more, um, it's the impact to the other types, because we were basing it off the existing single family standards. So while we could permit the different housing types and establish standards for it, if they don't actually exist in, in terms of lots in our city, then we just have something in code, but isn't actually implementable, because there's no, you know, lots that stay.
We could.
We can also bring back at the, uh, planning commission meeting where, where we, uh, bring our next draft for recommendation, uh, of more analysis as to how many lots are over two acres in general, and to, to the point of how many of these lots.
Citywide or in?
No, no, for the, for the acreage residential. And that way, we could at least get a quantifiable measure of how many lots would be, uh, potential, the, you would have the potential to subdivide.
Do you know what the minimum lot size for a large lot is off the top of my head?
Yes, that.
I think it's ten thousand.
For a single family detached, LLRs, twenty thousand square feet.
Which is roughly.
I'm wrong, twenty thousand square.
Which is roughly a half acre?
Yes, so a little less than half acre.
Yeah.
So roughly a half acre? I mean, it's just, so if we said forty thousand per acreage, make it an acre, I mean, it just seems.
But, uh, we also, I, I mean, do we have people who live on, in those current acre, um, neighborhoods, are they asking us to change these things? I mean, there's also just, I hear, you're trying to make it logical, but are you the only one? If the people who live in those lots don't care, why would we make the change anyways? I mean, are they pushing for us to change?
It could affect the lives of the lot next. It could affect neighbors' lives. I think not one person, one lot.
Yeah, like, as I was mentioning, it's more that, um, if they were to convert it to a dup- if they wanted to build a duplex on that lot, they wouldn't then meet the lot area. So that's kind of like the discussion that I'm hoping we can have with council and commission.
Yeah, more, kind of stems into more into the next slide, more about, um, equity. If we're saying we wanna allow certain product types, but we're gonna make it impossible to put in somewhere else that we're not allowing it. It's, it's, it's basically exclusionary zoning. If you do it that way, you're saying we're gonna, we're gonna allow it, but you have to meet all these various requirements that are impossible to meet. but you have to meet all these various requirements that are impossible to meet.
Yes. So like I mentioned, staff did our analysis based on average lot areas. But you know, if council and planning commission would rather we look at what is the actual smallest lot in each of these zone districts and then change our development standards based on that, that's I think a point of discussion right now.
This only is for the larger.
That's for the acreage.
Yeah, currently we are-
Acreage only.
Yes, we didn't change the minimum lot areas for the other. Yeah, I can flash the table back up.
That's not even at large lot, okay.
Currently, we're, we're really only referencing that acreage.
Yeah, we did not change this to the minimum lot areas.
Air my gavel.
Drinking problem over there.
Next slide. Only if we allow duplexes in the neighborhood, right? I mean, why would you want to cut it in half if you weren't having, um, a duplex or, or to eat, split it up into, so you could build two houses, right?
Yes, because then we, based on the data, like I was saying, we then base the duplex standards on basically half the single family standards too.
So it's duplex and if they wanted to put two single families on this large lot.
Right, but you could build a cottage community and just put sixteen units in there. That feels a bit, it's hard to build a duplex, but it's easy to build a cottage court on a acre with our current, this current proposal, right? We've made it much easier to build a cottage community on an acreage.
Well, the feedback we got from our technical stakeholder group is that it's actually a little harder to build cash court communities because of just how, uh, for sale products are made for that in terms of division of the products and parking. They end up being more of a condominium flat product, which requires an HOA and, uh, additional fees. So that actually becomes like a more expensive product or more like, um, harder product to actually subdivide.
Yeah, but-
Is that reflected or not?
But I, I see, uh, what you're driving at is that currently we would allow for, uh, cottage courts on a, you know, lot that's already existing, uh, versus trying to subdivide something that's on a large lot. And we haven't allowed for that subdivision to occur because we still have that large minimum lot size. Yeah, I understand your point there.
That feels a little dis- un, feels disconnected.
Anything else on that? Go back to that slide.
Go back to the slide. You didn't even get to the one I complained about.
But we're getting that next.
Oh, okay.
I didn't, I didn't forget about you.
Do you want me to repeat with them?
So do you have, it doesn't seem like, since we're kind of divided, we don't, do they have clear direction?
On which?
On any of this. On the, um, on the things on this slide. It, it seems like we're very divided on it.
I agree. So we got to see what Steve thinks.
Has Steve shared with you his perspective, Jim?
Share with me.
Generally, yes, but, you know, I'll yield to the mayor on this. I think we, it's okay to leave this a little bit loose tonight, especially since the planning commission still has their-
Right.
Process and, you know, staff, we're, we're all hearing these, these, these comments and I think we're all processing. And, uh, I think staff and the planning commission still have some, some work on what to, uh, recommend and bring forward. Does that work? Any, okay.
So are we good on, all right, good, good to move on, I should say. We're not good.
I think we're, we're clear.
We're not in agreement, but we're good to move on.
We're clear about our, our disagreements.
Yeah, and they, just on that same point, I think, I think it, for that reason, it's important that we do hear from as many voices as there are on these topics. If you feel strongly about them, it's important that we all kind of can hear that, that conversation, so.
Yeah. I had one question. Jared suggested that perhaps you could bring some data back on the acre, the fourth bullet, specifically, um, changing the acreage minimum lot area. I think that would be helpful for our planning commission meeting. And also I, I am wondering about the economic impact of that to the, uh, landowners that say have five or ten or fifteen acre lots. There might not be any. It sounds like there's only thirty ACRs anyway. But by reducing the minimum lot size, you're providing perhaps an incentive to subdivide, which then adds value to that property when they sell it. I, I think that information, I, I don't know. I assume that if I had a property that I could subdivide and it couldn't be subdivided before, would have more value.
Typically, when you can do more things, your property is more valuable.
Yeah, it's like all of Aberdeen Village, you know, could be a cottage court, lot by lot. Cause they're all quarter acres or bigger.
Logically, that doesn't make any sense though. No one's gonna go and do that.
Are you in an HOA?
No, well, we, the HOA collects funds for the parties, which are really good parties. They're very, I like the HOA.
So he lives in a frat house, a frat community.
So can, can HOA regulations override the implementation of duplexes or cottage courts?
The city of Littleton does not regulate HOA regulations. Um, we wouldn't, the city wouldn't enforce them. That would be on the HOA to enforce. Typically, if there's some type of legal dispute that comes up, that's for real estate lawyers to figure out. But typically, it would be the stricter regulations that prevail. So for example, if we allow for, you know, four foot fences, period, but the HOA requires that you can only have split rail fences, then that's more of the stricter regulation. So you can only have a split rail fence in your, on your lot because of your HOA regulation.
So the HOA can be stricter than the code?
Yeah.
Yeah.
It can't be more like-
Unless the state says no, basically. Cause that happened with the, with the ADUs.
Right.
They, they get, those pukes into those.
The state supersedes.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, onto the non-controversial slide. Everyone good? All right, let's go ahead.
Well, I feel like I've already said my piece, so I don't-
Do you want, you want it anymore?
No, I, I appreciate the, the questions you guys gave me and then-
I had, I mean, I think this is probably the most contentious and I think we have the most disagreement. I wanna just put out there. So currently, we could have a sixty-six hundred square foot, single family home that has six bedrooms and is allowed in a medium lot residential area that could have two adults and six, two parents and six kids, so eight, eight people. How is that functionally different than having a duplex, a si-, a two thirty-three hundred square foot duplexes with, uh, four people living in each one? Or how is that different than having a sixty-six hundred multiplex with four units that you had two people on each one?
Cars in here.
How is it? So let's say it's, uh, older couples, they're in their seventies or eighties, they have adult kids living there. They have four sets of twins that are all in their twenties. Let's move them back home, live with their parents.
Super weird.
Well, it is, it is super weird. But you could have, literally, you could have eight cars or not, or more there. And figure a si-, a single family that has that house probably has some money to enforce some cars. You could have a multiplex or a duplex that has, you know, working parent and then kids and have one car each. So the, I don't buy the car argument. I know you don't either, but I know you were in for devil's argument. So I'm just putting this out there. When we, we're talking about duplexes and multiplexes and where they can go, it's, it's somewhat about the, the structure, but you could have a house, and I invite both Robert and Pam over to my neighborhood. I want, I want you to find the multiplex that's in my neighborhood. I bet you won't be able to find it.
I'm not saying I could.
But I just wanna say that when we're talking about this, we're, we're trying to find places for people to live. And we could have much more impact on single family homes, large, you know, old McMansions back in the nineties that have, don't fit with the aesthetics of what people think of the character. You know, my neighborhood, we have houses that were built in the twenties, thirties, forties, fifties, sixties and seventies. All look wildly different. So there's, you can't say that's what a single family home looks like. And I think when we're getting to this idea of how we're gonna be allowing more people to be able to find places to afford, you know, duplex everywhere, like you said before, it's not gonna open the floodgates. We're not gonna see so many of these. There's not a lot of people that are gonna sell and, or redevelop their own property and do that. And so.
You see a lot of scraping and building bigger homes that don't match the character in Denver. I mean, anywhere you go, Denver. We're starting to see it in what I call Old Littleton, you know, Power Street. These big houses popping up. And I would argue that if you have a duplex, the chances of having more people and the change in character are greater and traffic and parking and all that stuff than you would in a single family home. I, I, I mean, I, I ca-, I don't have statistics, but I know in my neighborhood, um, you know, we don't have, uh, I mean, we just have single families or retirees or-
I think that's part of the problem. We don't have enough places for retirees to go. My neighborhood has a ton of older people with one or two people in this massive house that I think would love a beautiful option to stay in Littleton, to move into something smaller that could fit some of these. So I'm a definite yes on this slide. I would open it up to acreage, the whole city actually, but for sure, yes on this one.
The problem with retirees is they want one level and that requires more land. And, you know, the patio home is not cost effective for a developer as a, you know, large home.
Nothing's cost effective for small developers, the, the way we have it. So I think that's the point of this whole conversation, right? To open it up, make it more cost effective for everybody, to build smaller, to build quality, to build character. I would rather open it all up and have more character or design book.
I mean, I think one of the things we hear, you know, most of the development that's been going on right now are multiplexes or, you know, multifamily, large boxes and apartments. And we hear, oh, we don't want any more, we don't want any more of that. Well, then-
I don't want any more of that yet.
Trying to figure out all the other option. We have a bunch of single family homes right now. They're, I think the idea is to have different options. I mean, all these are all small developments.
Yeah, I mean, I guess my, you know, Patrick, I, I'm willing to guess that the place that has the most diversity in the houses is the northeast part of the, of town, which is my district. And, and there's just houses that have been scraped and built now, duplexes there, that really don't fit in. I mean, it just, that, the northeast doesn't hang together as a community in kind of how it looks. And, and, and so, you know, I, part of it is I wanna have the northeast part of Littleton develop more character. I want it to look better than what it looks like right now. But I also don't want the rest of the city to look like some of those parts that are there, like-
What parts exactly are you talking about, Robert?
Well, there's just, there's some random duplexes there. There's, it's just, there's, I don't think there's, uh-
It's a hodgepodge of different-
Yeah, it's, I just don't think there's consistency in, in, in how that, and, and you know, maybe the future of the northeast part is that it's gonna kind of become more urban and what we really need to do is think about how we get bodegas up there and that might be how we make it nicer.
Conversation.
I know, that's, I, I understand. I'm sidetruckin' it, but you know-
Have to sit on Patrick. You make Patrick jump out of the seat.
But you just, I, what I, my worry is around incentives to, to, to scrape and, and create inconsistency in how that neighborhood looks.
And I think that's one of the things that people like Littleton is everyone said they moved from Castle Rock or Highlands Ranch where all the houses look, there is great consistency there. And I think that's one of our values is we don't have every single house looking the exact same way. When we talked to, I know when we heard about from South Metro Housing Options with the Habitat for Humanity, uh, sale of the single family homes, like that was the thing that people loved. We had all the affordable housing spread out throughout the city and went towards, it's still affordable housing, it's been de-restricted, spread throughout the city, but not controlled by South Metro Housing Options. And I think that's kind of what this is doing is giving that option to, to provide some of those, um, opportunities again. And what I'm hearing is we wanna restrict it to very certain locations, small family, which would be mostly in your-
Right.
District. And so I think the equitable thing would be a lot more, more options than just District Two.
Well, and, and really just to the, to the north side of District Two.
Well, as somebody who lives in the northeast part of, and who's been knocking on a lot of doors, it has not just been single family home doors that we're knocking on. I mean, and so I've seen just, and especially in the area I think you're talking about, it is very different. I mean, there are ones that look like they are from California, inspired by California with stucco. There are one, I mean, that's very different. And I think it's cool. And, and I kind of picked that neighborhood to, to move to because of that. And because that is where affordability is right now.
Dan, did you have your hand up? Yeah, um, so I live in a large lot residential area that's not protected by an HOA. ADUs are fine, duplexes I'm fine with. Their, duplexes are functionally not any different than an ADU, in my opinion. They're, you're, and you're adding a second unit in that area. The cottage courts, I'm not a hundred percent sure on, because one of the things that we were sold on with the college, cottage courts is that they are sort of infill housing to go in, in certain areas that are typically closer to busier areas. That, that was probably why the attachment was, was, was added in. I think detaching it is fine, but these, these are things that were sort of sold as, you know, people that don't, may, may not have cars, things of that nature. Probably gonna be, be closer to transit. Acreage and large lot typically are not that. They're just not. One of the things that I've thought about when I look at this is in place of the cottage court communities, would there be a, a way to basically put, not like a, a bunch of multiplexes on, on these areas, but treat it as one multiplex that can have up to four units in it as sort of a in-between option? Because when you look at the, when you look at what those, the multiplexes look like, that they're meant to look like a big, you know, suburban house that has up to four units in it, that, that I think would be fine on my street, to be perfectly honest. As long as it's something that looks somewhat like a, a suburban house that has multiple units in it, but one. Does that, does that make sense?
Well, that makes sense. I think that's the idea. I think the hard thing that we are finding ourselves into with the aesthetic police.
And, and I think that, that fits what, what is on, already on these properties. And I think it would actually be very easy for someone, if they wanted to, to just start chopping their house up. If they, if they really wanted to. If, if they wanted to own the, keep, keep owning that property and change it into something to where they, they have a few different options with it, they could almost immediately go into creating more housing. I think it actually is faster. I think it's, creating a cottage court is basically going to be, I need to buy a two million dollar lot, scrape everything on it and then re-, restart. That's not cheap and that's not gonna make those units cheap. Whereas if you've already have someone who has one of these units and wants to do this, large lots have a lot of space to park too, a lot of times.
Yeah.
So it, it, that, that's sort of the, the, the sort of middle ground that I came up with in my own head when I saw this. And I, I don't know if that's, but, but that's gonna create, you're going to have to write, write a whole new little definition of something. And I, you know, it's, it's not a, I know that's, that's a lot of work on your end, so.
I don't think so. I, I think what you're proposing is not permitting cottage courts in the ACR and LLR as we're proposing it.
Yeah.
So not permitting that, but instead permitting the multiplex product.
Like one multiplex product on that, to, to make sure, it's like one unit on that, on that area so that you're not really changing the character. It's, it's one big unit on a big piece of land. It just has more housing.
I, I actually agree with that.
So.
I think that's the ar-
I think that's your intention, yeah.
Sorry, I was gonna say, I think that's the argument too for if you're, if you're allowing the multiplexes on the, you know, or, yeah, I don't like that word either, um, on the large lot residential too, right?
No, I-
Cause again, the example pictures, a lot of them are, are on par with, with some of the houses that I see in the acreage and large lot residential areas. Um, I, I wanna say something about like history and character here, right? As somebody who owns a nineteen fifty-six rancher in Littleton, um, one, my neighborhood is a hodgepodge because at some point in the nineties, they came in and they built the standard, like Highlands Ranch set, like, you know, down the entire street, like across the road from me and down the street, right? So we're not, we're not really in character in my immediate neighborhood already too. Just because something is old or because it has a certain look to it, um, doesn't mean it's good. And, and I say this as somebody, again, who has that nineteen fifty-six rancher, who has issues with the roof raptors. I have issues with the air ceiling. It is an incredibly inefficient house and you will all come see me in a year when I submit my own permits for a massive renovation because it does-
Write that down, write that down. We've had it over twenty seconds, so.
Because it's- Because it's not, because it's horribly energy inefficient. It's, it's obscenely expensive to maintain in its current condition. As opposed to saying, you know, okay, I'm gonna, you know, we've got this, we've got this really shoddily built bungalow, you know, that somebody built and, you know, but this, this neighborhood is all these bungalows, but they're all shoddily built. And now you're led, now you're, now you're foisting this, this need to maintain these houses that weren't built to last. And why are we doing that? Why are we forcing people to, to, to maintain something that isn't, that, that isn't sustainable? That's gonna cost more, that's gonna cost more energy. That's just wasteful, uncomfortable.
Sure.
As Dan was speaking about the large lot residential, I envisioned then homes that are converted. We, we haven't really talked about that a lot, but, um, that are converted from a large, single family home to a multi. Several houses within the house, Patrick, type units and, um. It sounds like in our discussions, we're talking about new development, going in potentially older, existing, not older neighborhoods. But then there comes that question of what about conversions of existing units into, um, a multi, say, a single family into a multi-unit? I mean, that's not something we've even talked about. And obviously that happens in a lot of big cities.
I don't think it's excluded from this though, no. I think our mindset was that, but I think it's perfectly, that's probably even a better topic to have, you know, think about.
I mean, and that may also be a concern to some people, just like, gee, if I never could, you know, convert their home into, I think, basically, I don't know. I wouldn't say apartments, but, you know, a multi-unit structure.
And I think it's, I mean, for all of us here, not, I mean, every single one of us, when our homes were built, changed the character, changed the neighborhood for everyone else that was there at that time. And it's hard for us to not say, well, we don't wanna change now. I mean, we've got a, I, my personal take is trying to look at broadly for the entire community for forty, fifty, a hundred years and not just, oh, it's gonna impact me if, if a duplex goes in. Because, you know, fifty years ago, it was, Paul Bingham used to say, there were dirt roads and we couldn't get down here. And so, I mean, we're, we can't just draw a line and say we're done doing things because it's how it's been, like you said. I mean, and just because something's new, um, and a certain style doesn't mean it's bad or ugly. And that's, I mean, I, there are certain houses that I think are terrible, that look horrendous, but I know honestly, I mean, I think all of Andrea's neighborhood, I think, I hate those nineteen eighty's houses, sorry. I love Robert's neighborhood, look.
Well, that's funny. I, I think I have the ugliest house in the, in the council.
I didn't say your house, I said the neighborhood.
Okay, okay, yeah, my neighborhood is good, but my, my house is kind of.
Well, your house is all right. So I think it's, you know, to make sure that we're not making, I mean, we're not saying we're gonna put up, um.
Yeah, I, I agree with that. We need to change, you know, you can't stop change. But I'm looking for a middle ground from where we're at. And I feel like I repeated that three times, so I feel like that's not adding to the conversation.
I'll say, I'm gonna go the opposite direction of the middle ground. I agree with Andrea. I think it's, if we're gonna allow, you know, duplexes and cottage court in, um, smaller zones and, um, multi, or multiplexes in just the smaller areas. I mean, literally that is just a, the only reason we're doing that is for classism. Just to say the rich people that live in big houses don't have to deal with everything else with the people that live in smaller houses. I don't think that's fair or equitable.
Well, I, 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 as a resident of large, I agree that, uh, multiplexes make more sense than cottage in my neighborhood.
Like one, but it could be, could, one, like one multiplex on the large lot as opposed to.
Yeah, yeah.
Like the more, the, god, that word is horrible. The more, the more I say it's horrible.
Yeah, I, I'm, I'm, I'm agreeing with.
I apologize. I try to keep it within the defined, suspicious area covered.
No, I get you, but, but it's a, it's, it's, I don't think that that's, it, it looks like it belongs there. It just houses more people.
Right, I'm, I'm, but I actually, I feel like the horse is dead and we've beaten it. I, I, I wanna know.
Move on.
How do we, how do we have a conversation about quality that Andrea brought up? And, and I, and that conversation is not today, but that's, I agree a hundred percent with Andrea. That's the most important thing.
Actually, something along those lines. When, when you read through the survey results, it seems like most people assume that these are going to be ownable properties, not rentable. It just seems that way and that's the vibe that I got. Because we're talking about like the single police officer to get into a smaller unit, to start building equity, to start moving life along. I use that example because that was me in nineteen ninety-nine. I was a deputy sheriff a long time ago. It was, I was able to purchase a townhome, build equity, met my wife, built more equity. We ended up buying the home that we're in now. That's typically how most of us, I think, have gone along. And I think that's, that's what the intent of this was. I just don't know if there's anything we can do to say these need to be ownable as opposed to rentable. And I, I, I just don't know if that's a, that's a thing that we can even approach or do.
And I think the, some of the, removing some of the regulations and making things more feasible is, allows them to be, because a man, they tend to be cheaper. Inexpensive, should say cheaper, um, less expensive. And so, yeah, I mean, there's nothing to stop us to say a single family home can be three hundred thousand dollars versus a million dollars. I mean, people are gonna, um, do what makes sense for them, but to make, right now it doesn't, it's not feasible to put in some of those less expensive options.
Yeah, for sale by the time you scrape something, rebuild something else, you're like.
Right, it's gonna be hard. Someone's gonna scrape the two point seven million dollars, six bedroom, six house and sixty-six hundred square feet that doesn't exist in Littleton.
Drew, did you wanna say something?
Yeah, um, my concern with the cottage court, especially in the, in the acreage, is where do we go from a small cottage court to a subdivision at that point? Because we've got a two acre lot, theoretically, you know, you could have, as of the density right now, you could have thirty-two cottages on there. So where does that? That's why I don't really see the cottage courts specifically in the ACR is we're getting into a new neighborhood at that point. While the lot is still the same, we've got then thirty-two separate residences that could theoretically be sold off and controlled by one person.
And, and I think that, that that's something that we have heard from the group. I appreciate that comment. You know, one of the notes I've taken that, that we intend to, uh, do some review on and bring back to the planning commission would be, um, a closer look at, at that further allowance of cottage court. Seems like I'm hearing from, you know, a number of individuals that, uh, maybe cottage courts, uh, in ACR and LLR. Maybe not the, the preferred. However, there might be an appetite for multiplex expansion. So, yeah, absolutely noted.
Anybody on the cottage court, is there a maximum size of cottage court?
Three.
Three. Three.
And to be clear, I'm very supportive of the cottage courts.
Yeah, I mean, I think if we had had some really good, beautiful shots, and I've seen some gorgeous cottage court. One of the things about them is they're supposed to present to the street a kind of one or two building and they kind of go back and they're scrimmed by trees. I mean, we don't, we, we had some beautiful, uh, large building, multi, multi, multi-home buildings there. But we didn't have a great picture of, of, uh, there's a couple of communities in Arizona, places that have made gorgeous cottage courts that would fit right in in acreage. I mean, a lot of it's what you, in your head, you have this boogeyman of thirty-two units, as Drew just said. But the, the way they're designed or scrimmed can affect how you perceive what they are. The reason, I, I always go back to, try not to lose the forest for the trees in this conversation, you know? The reason we call it missing middle and the reason it's missing is because all of these forms have been made illegal on most of the places in our cities and our neighboring cities. And I, I see one of the big efforts here in this community is to, to re-legalize, uh, these kind of forms on as many areas as possible. And that's something that will be seeking in other communities, cause every community has to take its share of housing types. But de-legalizing happened. I mean, these, these things were legal, that, you know, we had all kinds of housing types historically, just legal on every lot. I mean, it was very much a free-for-all that built this city that was the historical roots of it. I don't know if you wanna bring up those slides, but I, I took some great pictures of. And what we're working on today is really about getting that de-legalization lifted. So that this missing part of our housing stock can, can blossom again. If you can hit the slide button in the upper, upper, it's next to the blue button at the top. So you can see, this is a duplex on, um.
I can't hit it.
Oh, it doesn't work?
No, it's pretty.
Something went wrong.
Yeah, reload, hit the reload, see if it works.
There you go.
Okay.
So this is a duplex on Alamo. Um, you wouldn't necessarily notice it's a duplex. It looks like a house. Go ahead and go to the next slide. I have seven pictures. Here, one of these is a quadplex and one is a single home. Quadplex, four people, individuals rent. This is Bill Hopping's house on the right. If anybody knows Bill Hopping from the historical one. There's a, he owns this four, four banger on the right. There's four citizens living there.
That was converted from a single family home.
I don't even know. It might have been built. It has four doors in the back.
Yes.
But this kind of thing has existed and does exist and without really disrupting neighborhood character. Go to the next slide. What's this? If you look, there's a second walkway on the far right and there's a walk, and that's a triplex on, on hill. Go to the next one. Uh, these types are hard to, now this, you might get, this is a four thousand square foot, forty-four hundred square foot, single family home, built amidst a bunch of little homes.
That does not match the character.
No, single family homes can come in and big, this is three bedrooms, four bath, uh, forty-four hundred square feet. You get, you get single family homes that can go right out of the character. Now, we don't have a design book. But in the, in the long run, this is adds to the dialogue on this street. This is my street. I know this building really well. Uh, fifteen foot ceilings, they went to the thirty foot height here. Uh, you know, when you have enough money, you can do incredible things. What's legal is this. What isn't legal are some of the other things. Go to the next slide. What are we looking at here? On the right is another four. Four individual renters are living on the right. And on the left is a duplex. But it's hard to tell what these are. These are historic, uh, buildings that are grandfathered in. Go ahead and go to the next slide. This is a single bedroom residence on Kaylee. Uh, it is four, so go to the next slide.
It's perpetually for sale.
From the back, you can see, it's a, it's actually four residential levels. Somehow, this is two thousand and three, six bedrooms, five bath, parking for eight cars. Could easily be, as Kyle's describes, it could be four, four units in a multi-home building. Uh, but it's one, we have just an incredible amount of variety historically going into these neighborhoods. This is two thousand and three, looks nice. You might like this. If I told you, actually, there's four units here and that top floor is a little half, half-size rental, you, it wouldn't make any difference. Go ahead and, this is the last one. Duplex and triplex, duplex in the foreground. There's a new triplex trying to go in there. I just think these forms, uh, can look very different and we have allowed them historically and these are.
I think that, I think that the fear is incentivizing scrapes. Because scrapes are what create those opportunities for just discontinuity with whatever's around.
Well, the triplex here is a scrape. There's an old little setback.
Right.
And the scrape in some, and two extra families now live here and an old building, which is probably not very nice.
Yeah, there, there are some, there are some housing stock in Littleton that is not quality. There's absolute housing stock.
I mean, I, I, I think what we learned, what we talked a lot about the stakeholder group is the, what happens is very gradual. And the deci- people don't have a nice house and just rip it down. Maybe somebody could do that, but that's not how we see it happening. And we don't see that in other communities where they have liberalized these things. Seattle has very liberal ADU laws and they, they, they look fine. They look nice. They haven't brought design books and they're, they're doing okay with that. We have a city where renewal is always needed. I mean, that's part of what the old legal structures allow. We had, people could buy a parcel and put a new thing or take an old building down and put it in. I think a lot of this conversation about missing middle is about going back to the way we just allowed things to happen. And let that, let people, people don't want an ugly house. They wanna, you, that, that.
Yeah, but there's, there's, there's no accounting for taste. There are some ugly.
There is.
And I, I mean, I think the thing is, is if we, if we make it more economical to, to do a scrape and a triplex, we're gonna get more scrapes and triplexes. And there's gonna be more opportunities for, for houses that, that don't fit in.
But it's not gonna happen overnight. Cause like, you know, you're talking about, people have to sell their house for it to get scraped and rebuilt.
You know.
I gotta tell you that. I gotta tell you.
Or they want to move somebody in with them, other family with them.
But the argument, and Kyle's argument too, that it's not gonna open overnight really is not persuasive. Ugly tomorrow overnight or ugly in fifty years is still ugly. I mean, and I don't think we're doing our diligence if we're, if, if, if that's, you know, we're, we're just like, well, it's, it's gonna be ugly, but it'll be ugly in fifty years.
Okay, but maybe we could look at some of the houses from the nineteen seventies and say, oh, they're ugly.
Right, no, I'm not, I'm not arguing that, I'm, I'm not arguing that every house is, needs to be maintained. There, there are some bad housing stock in this city. I'm, I'm not arguing.
It's the, the flip side of that, you know? Not allowing scrapes and redevelopment is not necessarily, uh, you know, persuasive either, just because it's been there for twenty, thirty, forty, fifty years. Again, I, the, the aesthetics, I, I care less what it is because there's ugly houses, people.
People could, this is a scrape. And it's not gonna fit in technically, right?
Ugly, good-looking houses is not, I don't wanna tell you what kind of house you should, what, people are buying houses, so they should be able, be able to buy the houses that they wanna.
I agree with Patrick. I think we've zoned out the missing middle. That's the bigger problem. So we're talking about opening the zoning to allow it back in. There's ugly single, there's ugly multi. We would like to not have any ugly. But none of this actually pencils out to me financially. I don't think it, we're gonna see a lot of it. It takes a lot of money to do any of these projects, so.
I agree.
I don't think there's a whole lot of fear there, but.
Yeah, I think that, I think the cheapest project is the split up the.
Yeah, you split up an existing home.
Split up the existing.
Still adding extra kitchens? That, that's a ton of money.
No, you're right, but I'm just saying.
It happened across the street for me is one of the reasons that I thought about this, because the, people that bought the house across the street from me, they, they paid a lot of money. But it's. Her parents live on one side, they live on the other and they have a, they have a newer, newer baby. I, I mean, he's probably, he's probably three now, actually, Jesus. Um, but they took a garage and turned it into a room and already had a kitchen in there because the old owners had expanded the house, put a better kitchen in, but they kept the old kitchen for whatever reason. So they were able basically to just turn that into effectively two units. I hope I'm not ratting them out. But they, but they, but they, uh, but, but basically you have the older couple living on one side of it and the younger couple on the other side of it. To be perfectly honest, I think you're gonna see a lot more of that. You're gonna see multi-generational housing in some way, in a lot of places.
What please changes that would have?
We get a number of calls.
Yeah.
As, you know, planner, uh, our planner of the day shifts. Good number of calls for ADUs, and I know ADUs isn't necessarily something in question because, you know, the, the state is, is pushing us that way. But almost, I would say the majority of our ADU requests were on the larger lots because they have the space for them, right? And, and that is kind of synonymous with our conversation about ADU versus duplex as well, right? Your, your example, I think, plays into that. But yeah, it's oftentimes it's family members that we hear about too. Oh, you know, I, this family had, um, a child and we'd like grandma to, to move into the ADU or something of that nature. That's something we've heard a fair amount. Um, and I, you know, as of right now, we've had to tell them, hey, sorry, you can't have an ADU. You don't have an alley. You don't, you know, you're on X zone district. And so, like I said, ADUs are kind of set aside, but I think the principle still applies, that, that we have people seeking those housing options. Absolutely.
Is it possible to open this up for public comment about acreage? Or are we not?
What do you mean open it? Cause it's.
Like, that's not one of the questions on this slide. I'm not interested in keeping the acreage exclusive.
What I brought up last time or?
No, like to allow.
No, broadening this, the code amendment to allow it in all districts.
Yeah.
Oh, broaden this. Yeah, that's nice.
Yeah, we can, I don't know about.
Yeah, everything's up for a discussion.
Well, we can engage it, but we can broaden it and bring that back to both bodies.
That's the discussion, yeah.
That would be my question.
Yeah, I mean, you said it, I think, I said it, Greshen said it, I think.
Which one to be clear?
Maybe you didn't say it.
Yeah, the multiplex one, I think we have more.
So at least the multiplex.
It's the duplex one where, and the cottage court. And the, I feel like the cottage court, I think we're having a lot of more consternation about in certain areas, particularly the acreage and the large lot. And the duplex is where there's kind of the most friction.
Yeah.
Yeah, and just, uh, the duplexes, the first community where I worked as a planner allowed duplexes in every single, sing, quote, single family zone district regardless of lot size. And the issue wasn't the type of housing that happened in those districts. It was more the design of the housing. That gets back to the comment earlier about the importance of not necessarily having a requirement that everything be brick or stucco or getting into becoming the HOA for the city. But prohibiting things like what are called snout houses, where you have a four-car wide garage and that's your street facade for that particular duplex. That's the character of our community. Most of our houses look like that.
There's some.
And there are some there for it. I will certainly allow that. Snout houses were, uh, very popular in a certain timeframe where. So, uh, yeah, I don't really have concerns about allowing duplexes in more areas. I think it's, yeah, I, I think some of the objections are a presumption that, uh, we would build a duplex that's uglier than a single family home. That's not necessarily the case. And as an SLR resident, I would resent having to shoulder the entire housing burden for the city of Littleton. So by all means, let's consider opening it up. And that gets back to the discussions about the equity of this.
Yeah, and I think, I mean, I just wanna thank staff on this together, cause I think the whole part of this was to, how can we re, um, bring back this missing middle housing into our, in our community that we haven't, we don't have any duplexes or fourplexes, multi-home, um, or smaller units, um, just the cottage court. And so I think that's. And so I think that's a good discussion. I mean, it is a change. It is a big change, at least on paper. I wish it would have maybe some more overnight changes. I think it is gonna be slow-going for a lot of these places. I mean, I don't think whole neighborhoods are gonna change, but here and there, you might see some, or you might not even see it. It might just be a quiet development changing, no existing homes that are being changed. I mean, I think back to like the Midwest, where I grew up. You have all these large Victorian houses that are turned into, you know, or single-family homes. And now our, you know, four units, eight units, bed, breakfast, different things, which is kind of a cool way to do it. And we just don't have, we've not allowed anything like that here. So I think, you know, Patrick put it well as to not make things illegal that would help the community. And so I hear there's some disagreement on some of the things, but I think it's a good point to go forward into the planning commission. And there'll be public comment on, at the planning commission meeting, our meeting. And I'm sure there'll be an article in the Independent about some of these changes proposed. And I'm sure we'll hear from people. And I think the other thing is, like Andrea said, you know, granted, one hundred and fifty respondents is not a huge survey, but we've been hearing, I mean, I've been hearing, you know, desire from the community to move towards some of this stuff. And I think we're getting, getting to that and we're gonna see the fruits of that.
I've also heard, are you getting rid of single-family neighborhood, single-family home neighborhoods? So, I mean, you hear one thing, I'm hearing, and maybe it's because who I am or the people I know or that come to me. But, I mean.
Single-family neighborhoods can still exist. They do exist. I don't think we're getting rid of anything. We're just allowing more stuff.
That's, I'm saying it's a perception.
Well, I agree a hundred percent. Thank you to staff for bringing this forward. Appreciate the setup for the conversation.
Lot of work.
Yeah.
Anything else before we rehash this discussion again in our own individual bodies? Maybe up from the dais? Great, we have one more slide. Does anyone need to take a quick break before we move on? Or do you want to?
Why don't we take a break after this?
After the ULUC updates? Can that be, that's a pretty short.
Short.
Short, we'll do that, yeah.
Two to three hours.
Three hours, perfect. Three more.
I intend to make that presentation quite short.
I assume you can get to the presentation.
It's very true.
The presentation.
Probably a little bit of technical difficulties with this laptop tonight. Oh, that's.
I think it normally just gets put on the screen. There we are. And so this is just next steps moving forward beyond what we just talked about.
Next year.
Precisely. Yeah, this is, this is a conversation about future ULUC updates beyond the NHO, the neighborhood housing discussion that we just had. So we're gonna kind of put that aside. We're gonna talk about future ULUC updates and what staff is proposing. All right, we're gonna talk a little bit about master sign plan, plating updates, other legislative updates beyond the ones that we talked about that are being addressed with the NHO. And some landscape updates, and then a future timeline. And ask for any input after that. So master sign plan. Project goal here is that we have a number of developments that are kind of on the horizon that will be multi-parcel commercial developments. So our code currently references a master sign plan. However, it provides no regulations in detail as to what that means. So staff is proposing to work on creating those details and restrictions that would be applicable to these multi-parcel. And we're also proposing that they be applicable to more of a campus environment as well. This would allow for kind of your larger subdivision, multi-parcel signs that would have a number of different users on those signs. Something similar to what you would see in other larger commercial areas.
But this is all commercial that you're talking about here?
This would be, yes, commercial. You would, there'd be parameters as to what would be allowed to apply for the master sign plan. So it'd be multi-parcel. It wouldn't be a single standalone entity that would be able to apply for the multi-parcel in a commercial environment. And then also taking into account such things as, let's just say that you have a row of outlots. And those outlots have some signage on the street. Well, sometimes you have a user or two that's setback a little further. Holding them to the same signage standards can sometimes be a little bit of a challenge. So analyzing that as well is what we're proposing in this, in this update. A plating update. So we've talked a little bit about the plating update previously. We, it has been a little slow to launch, but we are looking to launch it here in early 2025 and to have some input from the planning commission and of course, city council at the end. Talk about removing some code conflicts for better clarification. For instance, we want to really look at the criteria of some of the plating items. We keep getting a little bit tripped up on that at plating commission when we talk about preliminary plan, or preliminary plats. Trying to clarify that, right? Trying to clean that up. Second, streamline the plating process where possible. So some of this is in regards to some of our condominium items. The county oftentimes, you know, has some condominium standards and we can, we can work with that entity and potentially utilize some of their existing plating regulations for condominiums. Excuse me. Complement outcomes of neighborhood housing opportunities. We also wanted to see exactly where we wind up there. And we might have to address a couple of things on plating pending the, you know, finalization of this item. Legislative updates. So we've talked a little bit tonight about the ADU legislative update. There's a few others too that are, that we're working on in conjunction with the NHO. However, there are a number of other items that came out of the 2024 legislative session that are not addressed by the NHO. Oftentimes, a lot of these items will go into effect, not all, but a majority of them will go into effect, you know, on that July first date of 2025. So we would like to address those items and get ahead of things and work on that throughout the course of the next, or excuse me, not the next six months, but the first six months of 2025 to bring forward a text amendment that would address those prior to this July first date. And in association with that, we've been working with Public Works staff regarding some landscape updates. The predominant one that we're looking into is our tree mitigation standards. However, there are a couple of others that Public Works has identified and we're going to work with them more closely. We would like this item. There's also one of the legislative items that, you know, Commissioner Coronado has brought up as well that we'd like to, that pertains to landscaping. And we'd like to roll that all into that single update. So it'd be landscaping as well as legislative updates. So we're kind of blend those together just because the timeline would, would work out well for us.
Can you just tell me what tree mitigation standards are?
Yeah, so when you have a development, typically, it's a new development and there are existing trees on site. If you, we have some protection preferences in the code. However, if you're unable to protect those trees in place, you do have to remove them. If they are over twelve inches in diameter and of good quality as determined by a tree survey, by a certified arborist, then you would have to mitigate for those trees. So that's either providing additional trees on the site or paying a fee in lieu. The city arborist has identified our code as being a little lax in comparative to some other codes. Oftentimes, the twelve-inch as a minimum threshold size is a pretty high threshold. Oftentimes, smaller trees that are of good quality are also mitigated into a higher degree. And so those are the things that we'd like to discuss.
Thank you for doing that.
Certainly, you're welcome. And then this is just kind of a, I've been trying to utilize a similar graphic for when I talk about ULUC updates. So over the past year. So this indicates, you know, neighborhood housing, where we're at with that. Looking to wrap that up in Q1 of 25. A three-mile plan, we're still proposing to finalize the update to the three-mile plan here in Q4.
Just explain what the three-mile plan is.
Yeah, absolutely. So the three-mile plan is, is a state statute that requires us to have a plan for annexation or to address annexation or not within three miles of the city. So we're not looking to annex. It's not really a priority that we have heard of staff. However, we're required to have that plan. And so we're, we're looking to update that. And it's, it's been a few years. So trying to get that brought back to you.
That was in essence designed so that, kind of in response to Denver, so that you could not grow outside of that three-mile radius within any given year.
Was it like a, like Paul and Bill, the airport down south?
Yeah, yeah. I thought you were gonna talk about Trailmark.
No, no, no. I figured we're gonna take over Jefferson County here pretty soon.
Sneak attack.
On top of that, plating is just below that one. It's, you know, I was trying to condense this graphic, so I put those two side by side into Q2 of 2024, or excuse me, of 2025. We also have some long-range planning efforts on here. Littleton Boulevard Subarea Plan, kicking that off in Q1 of 25. And you'll all hear a lot more about that in the future. The master sign plan, hopefully working on that in Q4, Q1, then Q1 of 2025. And then the legislative updates, Q1 and Q2, as previously discussed in previous slides. Future items, these of course are tentative or more than, I'm more than happy to take input on this. But a couple of things that are, we think are on the horizon. Historic preservation plan, planning efforts, the potential for a city plan update. So more of that comprehensive plan update that we'll need to talk a lot more about prior to, you know, and the asterisk on that is definitely tentative. But we know that that would be on the horizon somewhere and to work on. And then we've got, so want to work a little bit on vehicular mobility in the future and sustainable landscaping as well. We'll take care of a few of the sustainable landscaping items, but we'd like to do a little bit deeper dive in the future. With that.
And I should just say.
Oh, thematic approach, sorry.
The NHO one on that graph, you know, it's set at Q1, but in theory, it's.
It's like a sliver.
Week one.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Just barely, yeah. We also talked previously about that thematic approach. Still trying to work on kind of themed items that are more focused rather than doing kind of the shotgun approach that we used to do. Yeah, allow staff to focus on one topic. Increase effort on research for, for a much more narrowed item. Focus engagements. So community updates, which were the ones, such as the NHO, would have a much more robust community outreach. For instance, you know, in this process, we've had the survey. We've had the red lines go out earlier. Have this joint session as well. And then the more technical updates. So for instance, the plating is probably more of a technical update where we do a referral out to the public and then move towards bringing you planning commission and then state council the recommendation. And with that, I'd ask if you have any discussion or, or other topics?
So just a preview of what they'll be working on for the next great couple of months? Any questions? Great, well, thank you, staff, presentation. Thank you, planning commission for joining us. Giving up one of your Tuesday nights to come and sit here and have a fun discussion with us.
May I add one last thing? We also, I put together this presentation before the planning commission meeting of last week. So we did hear of a couple of items from the planning commission that were brought up for some other potential changes. I have not programmed them in yet, but we're going to have some more study sessions around those items here in the future. And so this is, is kind of a ever-changing, that, that future slide is kind of an ever-changing.
Living doctor, yeah.
Precise.
Great. All right, well, then let's break here. Let planning commission. Either move to the audience to watch the, our discussions and let's go use the restroom. So we'll take a five-minute break?
Yeah, thank you very much.
Back to hear about ARPA lives again.
It doesn't die.
It does eventually.
It will, which is why we're here.
The rise of ARPA.
I'll turn it over to Tiffany.
Good evening, council. This evening, we have the agenda item of American Rescue Plan Act update. And really what we'd like to do is kind of recap where we have, where we began and where we are today and kind of the future of ARPA and funds related to ARPA. So just kind of a refresher, in 2021, as a result of the coronavirus epidemic, the feds did provide millions of dollars, multi-million, billions of dollars nationwide to help municipalities, states and counties to address some COVID issues and declining revenues during the pandemic. And so in 2021, the law was passed, it provided funding to over 19,000 municipalities. We got two distributions as a result of this, which came directly from the state to us. And the first half was in 2021, about six million, and the second half was in 2022, so two trounces. And when the ARPA funds came out, there was a lot of uncertainty as to what you could use it for, how long can we use it? And so there were a lot of iterations of updates related to ARPA and federal guidelines. And so we've been monitoring those over the years. And initially, the direction was you have to sell them by, sell them, you have to spend them by December 31st, 2024.
Oh, IRS.
Sell the ARPA funds. And so further guidance came out and said, well, what does that mean? Do you really have to spend it by 2024? There's a lot of projects that entities have entered into that take multi-years to complete. And so the feds did come back and allow us to continue to spend those funds through 2026. However, there are some caveats to that that we want to talk about this evening. And we do have required reporting to the US Treasury throughout the year. And over the last few years, we report on a quarterly basis, we have to share with them what we've spent the money on, what we plan to spend money on, and we'll have a final reporting likely by the end of 2026. So before we jump to the next slide, one of the things that I just wanted to share is based on the current regulations, encumbered by December 2024 really means two things or three things essentially. One is we have to have a contract that has been signed and approved by the city for whatever services or project we're gonna enter into. And two, we have to have, if we're working with another entity, let's say a nonprofit or another agency, we have to have a signed IGA. And then the third one is that if we are using it to continue personnel, which we are planning on doing, we have to have those employees hired and in place by December 31st of 2024. So a little more restrictive than we probably initially imagined and envisioned. But those are the parameters that we are working under currently. And so when the ARPA funds were first distributed, there were four categories that we could use it for. One is related to direct responses, which we've done a number of areas or a number of projects in those areas. The other is to provide premium pay to eligible workers, which we opted not to do that. And then the third one is related to the reduction of revenue. And initially, we had to go through a large calculation to determine how much we lost during COVID. And I think the feds really saw how complicated that was for some smaller and larger organizations. And so they did come back and really just give kind of a, an overall, your organization can allow 10 million under this revenue recognition or revenue reduction category, which really provided us a lot more flexibility in what we could use it for. And so we did identify that, yes, City of Littleton, of our 12 million, we're gonna use 10 million under the reduction of revenue category with the remaining 2 million and a little bit more than that to be in one of these other uses, which we really leaned on the first one, where we provided assistance to small businesses, to nonprofits, homelessness. And so we wanted to make sure that we spent accordingly for the ARPA restrictions.
So did you say 10 out of our 12 went into reduction of revenue?
Correct.
Okay, sorry, I wasn't.
Yes. So just kind of a summary here before we get into some of the details. We received 12 million, 81,000 in 21 and 22, 2022. As of September 30th, we have spent 9.15 million dollars. And we anticipate that we are gonna encumber or spend 2.6 million by the end of this year. And that does leave some funds available to be allocated or encumbered. And that's essentially what we'll be talking about and asking for some guidance and direction from council. So what did we spend these funds on? Throughout the years, we did bring back information to council and ask for support and approval to address some of these various areas that we spent the money on. Local partnership funding was one, we did use that for one year to provide funding to local nonprofit organizations. We helped purchase the bookmobile, we had some other grants that were related to that and a great opportunity for us to serve the organization or the community, and so we did carve out a piece of that. A larger expense was the mobile command unit, we had no funding that was, yes.
38 dollars of your budget.
Yeah, well, there's, yes. We can show that story at some point.
Silver lining of the year.
Yeah, yeah. So we did spend almost a million dollars in the mobile command unit. Ours was, you know, 20, 30 years old and we needed a new one and it was an allowable use.
It's like a Winnebago, the old one. What happened to that Winnebago?
You know, I can't recall if we donated it, I think.
No, it's now, we have the, we have the mobile command unit and we now have our hostage negotiating team, which you're, you're supposed to keep them separate on any incident. So now they are, they each have their own.
Hostage team Winnebago?
Yes.
Okay, great.
Is the support to the Littleton Business Chamber part of the business support civic programs?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
What is the civic programs part?
So, so quickly, the historic district, we have spent 170,000 dollars and that's related to grants to the businesses in the historic district and providing some funding in that area. So the business support and civic programs are kind of two programs right now. So we have the business support that we're providing to businesses, so they've been able to apply and do some improvements on their buildings. And we're still going through that process, we actually reopened it to ask for some more applications from businesses so that we could provide more support, we have some extra funding in that area. And then the civic programs is related to, title may not be exactly indicative of what it was, but a portion of that is related to the, the business chamber. So the amount that we have been providing them over the last year or so, and we have a contract with to continue to provide support in that area. So those are the two kind of main programs in that category. Housing efforts, that's really related to, I'm gonna look at my cheat sheet here. That's really related to some funding that we've been providing to.
That's the Bridge House, I think, right?
A portion of it is going to be to Bridge House, I believe, and we did pay, I can't remember exactly. I'm looking for my keywords here to, I can't look at my expenses. We did have some expenditures out of that related to Julie, who is our housing analyst, so she was funded by that for a portion of the year as well. So I know that's a piece of that for sure. And then, you know, we've got some planned expenditures out of that category, you'll see in the next slide how much is still left in that category. So we'll talk about that one in particular, because that one has a large outstanding obligation.
Homelessness.
Homelessness.
Where's the money to South Metro Housing Options? I thought that was our group.
Housing, South Metro Housing Options. That's what it is, yeah.
Was the Bridge House would have been other homeless?
Yeah.
Are you thinking of the two mixed up for one reason?
Housing homelessness, similar, but not.
So there's not my leftover housing efforts, there is my leftover homeless.
Homelessness. I keep doing that for one reason.
That number seems very high. What, give me an idea with the homelessness efforts. Where, where did we spend almost three quarters of a million dollars?
So Tri-Cities is included in that.
That's the Bridge House.
That's Bridge House.
That's the Bridge.
Yeah.
That was federal money, state money, local money had to match to fund that. Then include things like vouchers and stuff like for hotels or anything.
Yes, yes. But only a very small amount, and that's actually recent, that's probably in the next about two B. Spent to be encumbered, okay.
Most of it's Tri-City and Bridge House.
Yes.
And it was the split salary for the Tri-Cities homelessness coordinator over three years.
Right, and that's a category that we do have some funding available that we'd like to talk about potential uses by the end of this year. Street projects, so that was really related to Littleton Village. There was a request to repair some streets in the Littleton Village area, so there was some funding left. So we did repurpose that for some other street projects needs that we have here in the city. So we will be spending the remaining of that by the end of the year. Systems efficiencies, that's really providing some additional support to community development and ensuring that we have some support as they're looking at design the future process and systems like Trac-9. Software and security measures, that's related to cybersecurity and some other areas, multi-factor authentication, website design. So that's the category there. ERP, the Resource Planning System, that is our Workday implementation. And so that includes software implementation and the annual license and maintenance for that. We have spent 2.9 million, we will be spending the remainder of what was allocated by the end of the year. Council did provide some funding, some seed funding to Fleet and the Information Technology Fund, so that's the 1.35 million. Littleton Downtown Development Authority, 180,000, so that was the first year that we provided funding to them so that they would have some initial funding source. Library Museum Staffing, it was closed, so we did provide funding to pay for some of those employees in those areas before we were able to add them back to the general fund. Citywide Staffing Needs, so this is a combination of several departments. So this includes IT, Finance, HR, and Community Development. And I believe those are the four main departments that I've utilized ARPA funds to help either support current needs, support growing needs, provide additional staffing to help in a number of areas.
Those are temporary funded.
They are, they are term limited, temporary funded positions.
But that's probably gonna be the, that'll be the cliff part of this funding.
Yes, but council's also made some decisions through the budgets over the last two, well, last year and then pending this year to move the highest, the highest priority ones into the general fund, so those would be general funds. So we've kind of weaned down off of that and.
Yeah. Yeah. And ARPA does allow us to carry those funds into 2025 and 26, as long as we have them hired.
We have a couple left.
Yeah, we have three currently.
Nice.
Maybe four by the end of the year. Economic Development Program, so this is providing economic development analysis for some efforts that we've had over the past few years. One in particular was related to the analysis for the development at Mineral Place and strategic plan efforts, things like.
Pay for the SEDS study and project.
And then the last one is just some smaller things, such as some consulting efforts, some virtual court enhancements and masks is included in that. So I mean, overall, 12 million dollars, I think, I think we've done an amazing job of strategically allocating as much as we could in the previous years to be able to spend 9.2 million dollars almost. So 9.2 million is not 12, so what are we gonna do with some of the remaining? So Historic District, we already have plans to utilize the remaining amount of that category.
Tiffany, excuse me, I think, is it fair, we're still working within council's.
Yes.
Council's allocation for these, these funds, so staff hasn't done it, gone outside those lines. So that's why we're here tonight, is to follow through on what we have left, so.
Yeah, so these are continued efforts that have already been supported and approved by this council and previous councils. So Historic District, we still have a number of grants that we are entering into and finalizing. Like I said, we just opened it up a little bit more to ask for some more support in those areas. Same with business support and civic programs. We have some areas that we're continuing to fulfill that we had already obligated. So we will be spending the 135,000. Housing efforts, we have a number of, a couple of things left. Of that, 710,000, 600,000 dollars is related to South Metro Housing Options, so that's a pretty significant piece of that. And then the remaining is gonna be for rebates for fee and lieu housing efforts by the end of the year. Street projects, already mentioned, we've reallocated that to some other street projects, so we can spend that. ERP, Workday, we budgeted 3.5 million, this fulfills 3.5 million to pay for our licensing this year and in 2025, a portion, we saw 50,000 to transfer, so we'll make sure we do that by the end of the year. Citywide Staffing Needs, we have already, as Jim mentioned, committed to some of the employees that we've hired that are on a term limited basis to have them extended into 2026. And so we'll be spending the rest of that. And then Economic Development Programs, there are some efforts that they are doing in that department to provide some additional support that's needed in that area, again, related to the design of the future. And then some other efforts are related to homelessness and mitigation. So we're gonna contract so that we have funds available next year and potentially into 2025 for that. So this is the amount that we anticipate and expect to spend by the end of 2024.
Well, or.
Or encumbered.
Not yet, not spent on that.
Correct. Yes.
Did we get ARPA funds for relocation of Littleton Village residents or the consulting?
We did, yes, yes. Housing efforts, yeah, yeah. And housing, I got that right, housing, right.
There you go.
Housing. Any particular questions on these?
One I think Jim and I talked about was that Nevada Pedestrian Bridge.
So we have that currently in the budget for next year, so we're lining up hopefully early of 2025.
Yeah.
Coming from this funds or coming from. No.
Okay, yeah.
Capital, I believe.
It's actually, this is federal money and it gets more complicated with the, with the.
Campbell Projects.
With the construction procurement stuff, so it's simpler if we use the Plan, Plan A that we have now, it'll be faster.
All right, so really, we just wanted to provide an update of how much we've spent, what we've spent it on, where we are today. And then hopefully get some direction and support on what we want to do with the amount that's remaining. So we do have 272,000 left in homelessness efforts and 96,520, which has remained unallocated since the beginning of ARPA. So every time we'd come to council, we'd allocate something, this is the amount that's remaining that was never really allocated to any project. And so some of the recommendations that we have this evening are, so we have 368,000 roughly. So we have 368,000 roughly left, and so we wanna make sure we either spend or encumber this total amount by the end of 2024. So some of the options that we have listed here are related to homelessness support. And a recommendation would be about 100,000 in 2025 and 100,000 in 2024, 2026. And some areas that this could cover is continuing the Tri-Cities IGA and providing funding for that coordinator. We have a few projects that Mike can probably share a little more detail on, but related to safe parking and emergency sheltering and housing feasibility study. And so these are just some areas that we have the ability to help those efforts and further those efforts with some of the ARPA funds that we have left. The next one is hiring a management fellow. If you recall, we had Elizabeth, who was our management fellow previously, and she was ARPA funded. And so that is not a permanent position, it's not included in our 2025 budget. And so about 80,000 would cover a management fellow for a year, so there's an option to provide that so that we can, you know, continue to further our relationship with tri-county areas. And, you know, she was really supportive in our strategic plan and getting that, that project together and has just really been great in, in helping and support of the city manager's office and the city as a whole. So that would be another option.
I'll just comment then, prior to truing up this spending, as we were going through the budget process, we thought we didn't have money for, for, for that, for the management fellow. So this is act, that's actually the, the one position that we had in this year's budget that we don't have next year. It's really been, that has been a huge help for supporting the homelessness policy efforts, other projects too, and it's, I certainly have a vision long-term to have that role. I think it's good for getting a lot of work done in the city manager's office, 'cause the rest of it, no.
Your office is the biggest in the bin though.
And, but it's also good, just, I, I think for us to have that developmental role and, you know, have someone who can take on projects, I think that is important, so that's my lobbying for, for that.
Where do we, where do we? So I, you know, I think I talked to you about, I think one way to, you know, I've, I've talked about diversity of leadership team. One way to build the diversity is to have a relationship with an institution that has a graduate program that's diverse. And, and so, kind of where we source the management fellows is a way to build relationships with higher institutions that might help with other goals. So where, where are we getting our, what is, where are we finding our, how are they being?
We actually reach out to graduate schools in the Denver metro area and beyond that have public administration planning programs. And we, you know, it's a competitive process for those, for those roles. I know the HR department is building more, more inroads, you know, with websites and other associations of more diverse schools and programs, so, you know, the more we can do of that, the better.
Yeah, I mean, Metro is our, right now, Metro is our most diverse institution. I was in the public administration program at UC Denver and it's less diverse than Metro.
Are you saying we've had this management fellow for a year and you wanna renew him for another year, is that what you're saying?
No, we had the position funded with ARPA funding through this year.
Right.
So, yes, so we would like to extend the authorization for that position with ARPA through next year. And then we'll have to see what happens if we have funding for the following year. You know, ultimately, it would be a general fund decision for council as we have the annual, the annual budget process.
Was there any discussion about some of the environmental stewardship board, I think they're bored now? Their plans in implementing that, or does that not even qualify? You know, they had, they had that huge plan.
Using it to support their recommendations.
Yeah, to support a portion of their recommendations.
I think we're making, like, appropriate progress on, on the action plan right now.
Yeah.
Well, you, 'cause you, you have budgeted money for the, to, to support that, we hired a coordinator, they're making real progress. Some of the things they are doing won't necessarily require additional funding, it just takes time to get some of those done.
Okay, so that's not.
But I would expect that in, in probably, probably late winter, early spring, there'll be a joint study session with the ESB, and that'll be a chance for you guys to see an update and, and how's it going so far and what we look forward to in the, in the year to come.
But, to the point, I mean, more time, this is two years worth of funding, and so it's there. Do we need to, I mean, could we, your market and the other qualified, I mean, I don't know how specific we need to make it to say it's gonna be this exactly.
We probably wouldn't be prepared to encumber it by December 31st.
Yeah, that's, that's the key, we have to have a contract or an agreement in place by the end of the year.
I just thought some of their stuff was elaborate and seemed to cost money, you know what I mean?
Likely would.
Beyond the coordinator.
I was gonna say would, paying for the coordinator out of that and then using the coordinator's salary to do something else for them, you'll have more flexibility.
That actually ties into the bottom line there, which is an important thing for Tiffany to explain.
Yeah, the contingency. So, so one thing that we're gonna have to understand and recognize is that there is a chance of the 2.5 million dollars that we are planning on spending or encumbering by the end of this year, that we may not get a contract signed, approved, may not be able to go through procurement process to get to that point by the end of the year. So we are asking for some flexibility from council, and the recommendation is if something weren't to come to fruition or we weren't able to complete it, we would either relocate those remaining funds to a program that has already been identified and approved, so like business grants or historic grants or something that we could quickly pivot and address. Or we would carry those funds into 2025 and, or 24, 25 and 26 to further support staffing needs.
Things that are in the general fund, so we could actually save general fund money by using the ARPA funds for things that, you know.
I would rather send, I would rather save general fund money than spend it on things that are maybe not as high of a priority, so.
So, I will say that, if, next one, sorry.
I'm trying.
That, that it might not be as clear here, that, that we're, we're, we're working through a negotiation of the, the next iteration of the Tri-Cities agreement right now with, with, with the other cities. You guys will see that, the council will see that coming soon, you have a joint session, joint meeting with them and, and I believe it's the third week in November, and, and so one of the goals is to get it aligned so that you know what to expect going into that meeting. And so we're estimating that it'll be approximately 100,000 dollars each year, 25 and 26. So 200, 200, 200,000 total for the, the, the Tri-Cities. And that would include those four bullets, the coordinator, the safe parking, the severe weather. And then, I, I, my pitch for the hiring of the management fellow is, I, I never missed Elizabeth so much when I realized all the things that she was doing. So right now, you know, somewhere from five to 10 hours of my time is spent in, in the severe weather subcommittee, in the change the trend meeting, in the, in the various Tri-Cities meetings, those are all things that Elizabeth covered before. And I've loved getting into it and learning it all, but I also enjoy the flexibility when there's another team member that can do those. So if, if, you know, among the other things that the management fellow adds to the table, it also has a multiplying effect on our office.
Let me say, so with the Tri-Cities, so that plan three years ago, that had a little bit of a price tag, but we've almost completed all of it. I mean, when does that actually ever happen in government, right? So I think that is a huge investment to be smart, and now that we're redesigning for the next iteration of that plan, we need that money allocated so that we can continue to execute. And we learned a lot from that for those first three years of the plan, and the fact that all of those are either completed or in progress, like, that is fantastic. And I think we're on a good trajectory for that, but we gotta keep showing up and investing. We're not gonna be able to attract other regional partners unless we have skin in the game, so we have to. I mean, I would advocate strongly for the bulk of that money to go toward the Tri-Cities work. And it was already allocated, we already agreed, you know, back when we were deciding up the buckets, that we wanted, you know, that half a million dollars to be dedicated to homelessness, so I think that's only fair in terms of what we decided, you know, two years ago.
So that joint session, a large part of it will be showing what has been accomplished in the last few years, as well as a proposal for what we want to accomplish going forward.
Yeah, I'm, I'm supportive of the initiative, I'm, I just have a lot of anxiety about the cliff of when this, this, when the ARPA money's gone, what are we gonna do? Uh, homelessness, homelessness challenges are gonna continue past that, so that's my.
But that's part of the incubation and the building that infrastructure and those relationships in place so that we can have that conversation, or you can have that conversation again in a year.
Well, and that.
And that would be part of the planning process, is how do we think about this long-term, where is that money gonna come from?
Right, and, and in some ways, I, in my normal fashion, have totally taken us off track, I support this part of the thing, so.
But the cliff, you know, all these things that we're doing, some of the things like historic districts and grants, you don't give out anymore grants or give out a smaller number of grants, but some of this other stuff, that's all, infrastructure is built, like the bookmobile and the person managing the bookmobile, what happens in two years? We do have to absorb it from the general fund, or it goes away.
Purchases of it.
That's the purchase.
All right, that wasn't a good example, there's some things in here.
We try to be very strategic.
Be mindful about that, one-time stuff.
Okay, so it's, when you invest in that infrastructure, when you don't have that money, you go to another.
And example for homelessness, we have been thinking about that, and while we don't know the outcome of the election, we believe that there will be some room over and above the proactive safety work that we have planned for the marijuana sales tax increase. If that passes, there very well may be some funding to continue approximately that, that 100,000 dollars of homelessness policy support. That's all, all subject to your budget decisions, if it passes, so. But that's the kind of planning and thinking that I, I think we've been doing about how we can avoid the cliff.
So for example, like the chamber, we're funding them for what is it, three years or whatever it was. We hope they're self-sustaining after the three years.
They said they'd be self-sustaining, so.
Looking at their numbers, but.
It's a future discussion.
Yeah, but the, the, those kinds of things, that you won't.
Yeah, I'm sort of the homelessness, the question I have with the management fellow, one, I just. Or you, you, you three in the city manager's office, Govern for America, I don't know if you're familiar with that, that's pretty much what they do, is basically have fellowships that they work with.
So they, they help us with the recruitment?
Yes, they, they literally have a program, and it's, I think it was, I don't, I think it was 80,000 dollars, basically, what the city has to pay. And they have a very diverse pool of candidates there. But then, I was gonna, along those lines, I was gonna say, did anyone ask, does the city attorney need a legal fellow? Or is that, he asked if he could use any of the ARPA funds, just for parity, nobody asked.
Do you need a legal fellow?
Well, he's asking now.
Oh, I was asking now then. I'm fine, I don't think that's a qualified use for ARPA funds.
I'll lend him my advice whenever he asks for it.
I will, I will be remiss if I do not mention the last item there, the contract system support for Workday ERP. So we do have a continuing contract that we entered into with Workday to provide subsequent support for the next two years. We just need that, I think anytime you go into an ERP implementation, you're gonna continue to need some support. And so that is always gonna be an option too, if we wanna provide some funding towards that. We have a contract currently for about 146,000, so that would definitely save some funds from the general fund if we wanted to.
My, my assumption is that is really paying for training, am I not interpreting that correctly?
No, it's not, it's not training, it's having support when we identify something that's not working correctly or we might wanna change a business process, they're the ones who help us.
So does all of these options add up to the 368?
Roughly, it does.
Okay, so.
Yeah, that was my question, you guys have 368, 715,000 dollars worth of recommendations?
You do. So if you break it up, the, the homelessness is about, is 200,000, the recommendation, the management fellow is 80, and the remaining 88,715 could go to furthering business grant support program or supplementing that contract with the ERP.
And I want more allocated to homelessness than 200,000.
We need to be, we need to be.
Contracted.
Under, yeah, contract, which is the challenge. This amount matches the draft IGA, so if there's more than we can do under the IGA, then, then that's, that's something we can talk some more about, but that's about where we are.
So it's not like that additional, what was it, 80, 8,000 or whatever?
80,000.
Would make sense for ER, for Workday?
Either that or business grant support program.
What's the, what's the status of the business grant program now?
So we are currently still working through a number of applications, and essentially what we would do is we would increase the amount that they requested, so we might have only given a business 25,000, but they were eligible for up to 200 based on the cost of their project. And so we would go through and probably do a percentage allocation to the people who have already been approved under that program.
So, so far, the staff's been trying to kind of help as many as they can, but that, I mean, they haven't been able to help as much on the individual projects as had been, had been, you know, eligible for the grant.
Is the grant focused on a specific neighborhood, or is it all businesses throughout the city?
It's throughout the city.
A lot of facade improvements and other kinds of capital stuff, and it's, it's on a reimbursement basis, right? So they have to complete the project, so we're not putting money out ahead of the, the work.
I, I support the diversity that you have here, that we don't put it all in one bucket, and I also support that if you need to make last-minute changes based on contract availability within the context of what you've given us, that, yeah, I, I would think that they need to come back to us.
Well, we need to approve, and the budget or what, I don't know exactly what it is.
We just need your approval to make adjustments.
Yeah, but we, don't we need, do we need to do it formally at a, oh, okay.
Just giving direction, we've already appropriated all the funds and they carried forward over the years.
Except for 96,000.
No, it's been appropriated, we just have held it as unallocated, yeah.
I'm waiting for your direction, so.
But now it would be allocated if we approved this.
Now we'll spend it by this plan.
Correct.
Sounds to me like the contract support for Workday would be, if, that seems to be more of where the, those last two are more of the open-ended, whereas.
Those are probably the easiest ones for us to continue. Help me understand the IGA with Tri-Cities, because I see that just needing more and more money, especially for safe parking, because that does come with a price tag for some of those case management services, so help me understand that.
Why don't we, well, there'll be a lot more on it at the meeting in a few, few weeks. I think you're right, we could probably allocate more. It would be unspecified at this point, but I know we've had confirmation, finance has confirmed with the federal government that having it under contract through an IGA qualifies, counts. So, this is what we've been talking about with the, with the, with the Tri-Cities group. You know, we might have, how, how, but if we talk offline and kind of spell out what those 200,000 dollars would be used for and how much we think we're gonna need.
I still think we're gonna need more, based on being in all those meetings. So unless there's something the city managers did where they were just working out those numbers, I still do not think it hurts to. This money was already allocated, we already decided on this bucket to go toward homeless services, so I'd be remiss not to advocate that we keep it for that purpose.
We already allocated over the half billion already?
No.
Well, I mean, looking at some of those other, those other.
Yeah, 627.
Six, yeah, I mean, there's, there's, yeah, three quarters of a million almost there.
Not for homelessness, you're talking about housing.
Let me ask you, I mean, Mayor, what's, how does additional funding for homelessness rate among the council among these purposes? Because I, I think we could, you could give us direction to work toward kind of the high-end amount that we could need for homelessness, and then work from there through the other things. But, if you're good with what we have there and you wanna make sure that we have some funding for the others, then that would be some avenue for your discussion.
What you were saying, we basically said we've had 272,000 dollars going to homelessness, you're suggesting to only make it 200, not 272.
At this point.
I don't, I don't think that's helpful, because we're gonna need more as we go into this next planning phase and to do some of the things that we. I mean, we haven't designed the plan yet, right, so I would love to have those extra funds, which can easily be added into that IGA since the government will accept that. And I just, I think that's only fair. This is important to our community. I mean, you just got an email about it. I mean, it comes up quite often.
I'm gonna, which do you have played on here?
Yeah, I'm, they're in, they're actually listed in my priority order, so homelessness is a top priority for me and.
But so if there's top priority, do you wanna put more?
Yes, that's what I was trying to say. But I, on the one caveat, that I don't want the ERP to crash and burn. So as long as it's not crashing and burning, then, then, then. No, I, 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 but I, ERP is hard and if it, and it is, it, so I don't want it to crash and burn. But if it's not burning, then it's in my order of priority.
So then would the 272 for homelessness keep at that? And then the 96 go towards the ERP? I mean, would you have the need to spend?
Or one of the others, the, the management fellow or including the business support.
I understand that, that's why that's called ERP.
Yeah. I mean, we already have funds allocated and.
I, I mean, my rationale for saying that is I think ERP supports the entire organization.
It does.
Provides a broader foundation. Nothing against the management fellow, but that's not as impactful across the, the organization to make the ERP run smoothly.
I don't know, I already feel like we spent a ton of money on that ERP, so I would, I would be fine supporting.
And I think this is supporting the staff.
I, I see your point, I see your point with that. And Elizabeth was doing a lot of some of those more community-driven things, so I get that value. I'm, I could go either way. You all tell me what, what you want on, with the 90,000 or 80,000, that would be on top of the 272.
I really wanna counsel whiskey tasting, and I don't think I'm gonna get that, so.
So what are you proposing?
So hang on, Gretchen wants to keep the full 272.
272.
Patrick says you're good with the 200 homelessness here, 80, just what's put here and then the additional 80,000 dollars towards the other two. Robert, I'm hearing you say you, you would rather the homelessness stay at the 272?
That's right. And then my second priority would be the management fellow. And unless there's a fire in the ERP, and then I'm worried about that.
But it's making sure it's successful, ERP.
I don't, I don't think it's on fire, so.
I think I'm more with Patrick.
Okay, as the presented here is the 200 for the homelessness and then management fellow.
Kind of spread it out a little bit.
Andrew?
What do you say?
I get to go last, so that's my point, I hear you.
One, two.
Two.
No, you go first.
No ma'am.
I will do wherever there is consensus. If I give my 272, I will do wherever there is consensus for the latter part, truly. I guess I'll go with the 272.
Yeah, that's, I, I would support the 272 and then I was gonna say more for the ERP. If we don't need it, I mean, it's the hard thing is we gotta figure this out and.
It would free our money in general fund if you used it for the ERP.
Yeah, we already have a contract, so it's already.
Okay, then I would say that, and you might wanna check with Nevo though, I think, cause I think it's, I guess it was.
So I'm, just checking, support for, for management fellow. You said that there's money in the general fund, that we, we have funding for some ERP support.
We do, we do. This would help supplement that.
This is staff's recommendation for impact on the organization.
So I think council is, wants to keep the higher amount to the homelessness and work out with the Tri-Cities.
Right, so we'll bring back the. Can we come back, even with the email? I mean, we wanted to have this public, public discussion and through your, your direction, and I think we have. Can we work through the homelessness, work with the, with the cities? And then get back to you with an email, kind of on how we can, where we're landing with all this?
So we're saying home, 272 for homelessness and the rest for ERP?
I think we still need to decide on the, the last piece for consensus.
Okay, so we.
I lean towards the management fellow rather than the ERP.
I'm hearing we need to make sure we have funding for the ERP.
And if we do, then we can take that off the table.
Okay.
So we really have, we've only done the 272. I'm just trying to be clear.
What was that?
We, 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 we've decided on the 272, what about the rest?
So that'd be like 96?
Yeah, 96.
That's what they're asking for.
Right.
Robert says he'd rather go to the management fellow.
But I'm not gonna fight to the death if that's my priority.
It, it seems like it's the management fellow, the business grant or the ERP. I mean, those are the three options that we're.
I think the business grant is the lowest on my priority there.
I agree. Because I've already got money. As long as I get my 272, I will, wherever you all want.
Yeah, my priority is the management fellow.
Can make more of the management, more of the housing work happen with the management fellow. Okay.
Okay, I'll be fine with that. And then, and then you get the ERP money out of general.
So what's, I wanna ask Tiffany, what's the impact with the ERP with the, the broader organization? Would that money be well-spent there to help support? I understand your office will do that, I'm, you know, that's a small part of it.
I mean, any, any support that we have for the ERP is critical, right? When, if something were to fail or we needed to do something, that is the organization that we go to to help mitigate or fix something if it is broken.
We're not gonna let it fail.
No.
We're committed to it. We just, it'll impact, it will continue to impact the general fund if we don't put this in its place.
But it does provide a lot of support for finance, HR.
We have that contract.
Yes.
We do.
We're, we're already losing the, that point, that we, we have funding, we have a contract, we have support.
Right, but she's saying it was easier to get it in because we have a contract, we just adjust the price of the contract.
Yeah, the management fellow, we would have to hire before December 31st.
Yeah, so if you can't hire the management fellow, put in the.
I don't see how, yeah, that's all that feasible.
I, I, I think it is. It, it's, you, you, human services positions are, are, in, in cities are very desirable.
Okay, well, I'd stand with ERP.
I'm not gonna fight over it.
Well, I don't, I mean.
I thought you, you said the management fellow and the ERP would come out of the general fund.
I think.
The ERP will.
The ERP will.
ERP, that's nice.
Man, this, yeah, this is, this is the.
I, I wanna see more of that housing work get done, so if I.
I have no problem with the management fellow.
Management fellow, management fellow, management fellow. I'm checking Steve. So it sounds like there's more support for the management fellow.
I think we'll still follow up with an email. I hear where we're landing with all these things, based on this discussion.
That would be good. And I think the key too is that sort of the IGA, it'll have to come back to council before December 31st.
You'll see the details.
So you will see the detail.
That's what I just said, you said it doesn't have to.
No.
No, the, the.
The IGA. Oh, the IGA.
For the Tri-Cities.
Yes.
Okay.
Would that come at when we have the joint meeting with him?
You, you'll, you'll.
Hopefully before the joint.
We, it might, it might come, it might come after that, but the details will come forward.
Okay.
You'll hear more at the joint meeting.
Okay. It's gonna be good, spoiler, almost everything's accomplished.
Good job, I'm happy to hear that.
Can it just be a memo then? All right.
Jagbird, yeah.
Any update from the city manager?
Nope.
Any from the city attorney? And then I'll just say, we'll see everyone again November 12th. We don't have a meeting next week, we don't have one on the 5th. And do we have the legislative, legislative gathering set yet? Cause on the tentative calendar, it was November 8th, but I think we are in flux with that date.
I suggested that was a little insensitive to some of the people who are running for office.
I'm a little bit loud and clear, so. We are, I've been tiring with the chamber to see if there might be interest in co-listing an event. So I think their calendar in December looks more promising, so we'll start, we'll start having that. So I think that's just working with Jim to.
I do have one more.
I thought you said no.
On my phone. I guess I do wanna check while we're all, all here. I, we kind of have been polling for council, council retreat weekends. And we have one conflict, at least one council member who cannot make the, the originally pitched dates of February 7th and 8th. The next weekend, we think we can get the facilitator that we had, that we used, that we used last year. That's the 14th and 15th, it is Valentine's Day. So, but I wanna just check if you know whether you can make it or not, 14, 15, Friday, Saturday. Got one no.
What are you, what are you asking?
I know, I'm like, come on.
Asking if February 14th and 15th can work for members.
Only conversation hearts.
I've been married long enough.
Retired conversation hearts are hard to find.
So I'm seeing one unavailable. Happens to be, if I can say it, the same, the same one. So if that's the case, you know, I'll leave it to the council.
What about late January? What about the beginning of March?
Late January, we can't get Heather.
The 31st, or she can.
And it's really hard, it's gonna be hard for us to pull everything together.
Is that coming?
So.
What about David Martin, Detective Silver?
If this is here last year, but here.
She was aggressive.
Okay.
Yeah, we'll, we'll, we'll live on that.
So I, okay, gotcha.
Okay.
Avoid the opportunities.
So, happy Halloween, everyone. We missed our opportunity to dress up.
I dressed up as a suburban dad.
All right, and we're adjourned.
Yes.